I believe we are live, so whenever you are ready.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to the April 6, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting. We have a full agenda this evening and we are going to start with our roll call, please. Mr. Fike?
Allison Wilson.
Here.
Hunter Aarons.
Here.
John Fidler.
Here.
Dr. Anne Herring.
Here.
Dr. David Hemberger.
Here.
Michael Japina.
Here.
Dr. Sharon McLendon.
Here.
Hurry Miller.
Here.
Michelle Stratton.
Here.
All present.
Great. Okay, I can also see that our minutes are posted. Does anybody have any questions or anything they would like to clarify on the minutes? No? Okay, then we'll be moving forward to our Education Committee. Dr. McLendon.
Hey, thank you, Mrs. Wilson. For the Education Committee, we have two information items and then we have two items that we'll be voting on at our next meeting in two weeks. So we're going to start off with a recognition and Dr. Eric Flam will, you know, talk about that.
Thank you, Dr. McLendon. It's my pleasure to recognize a number of people who have done some really great things recently. First, Kathy Walker and her fourth grade team of students affectionately known as the Crazy Crew, participated in the BCIU STEM Design Challenge and took third place in this virtual event. They designed a mail delivery system which would work for the elderly or for those who couldn't get out of the house and get to their mail. And it was really neat. And so these four students, Andrew Correll, Colette Jordan, Eleanor Jenkins, and Eric Lubinow worked with Mrs. Walker to design this project and they earned a third place in the county. And what was really interesting about this project was that two of the students were in school in the AM and two of the students were in school in the PM. So they never got to work wholly together. It was, it was done virtually and nonetheless, they put together a great project, earned third place in the county. So we want to congratulate them and recognize these students and Mrs. Walker. Second, Mrs. Christina Pinkerton, art teacher at the high school, had two students earn Scholastic Art Show Awards, Carly Patton and Rachel Bondslaver. Carly earned the Lehigh Valley Art Alliance Award for Emerging Artists, came with a gift certificate. She also was awarded the Goggle Works Scholarship Award and finally, the Dr. Christine Oaklander Award for Excellence. This is a super prestigious award and also comes with a cash award. So congratulations to Carly. And Rachel earned the Dennis Danko Director's Choice Award, which also comes with a cash award. So two terrific artists representing our district very well at the Scholastic Art Show. Congratulations to Carly and Rachel and to Mrs. Pinkerton as well. We also had Science Olympiad, a Science Olympiad team at the senior high participate in the Virtual Regional Science Olympiad on March 17th. In the Northeast Regional, Ben Japina and Kira Mar placed fourth in Chem Lab. Taylor Steck and Ben Japina placed third in Geologic Mapping. And Melody Barath Sherman and Peyton Siemens placed fourth in Water Quality. In the Alternate Regional, Kelsey Nguyen and Hanseka Kandura took fourth place in Anatomy and Physiology. Zach Kaufman and Leah Long placed third in Fossils. Carthick Tarnath and Pratik Kanduru placed first in Codebusters. And June Barath Sherman and Zach Kaufman placed third in Ornithology. And Zach Kaufman took third place in Geologic Mapping. So congratulations to all of our Science Olympians and to Mr. Keebler for his work with these students. They did extremely well in the Regional Science Olympiad. And then just this afternoon, you may have seen from Mrs. Karate that Exeter Township School District has once again been named the Best Community for Music Education. This is the seventh year in a row. And Exeter has been recognized as one of 686 school districts that are among the best communities for music in the nation and one of seven in Berks County. So congratulations to Mrs. Karate and our musicians as well. Great job, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Flam, and congratulations to all of the students and teachers. I'm looking at everybody out here on the Zoom call smiling and applauding. It is such a pleasure to hear about what our students and staff are doing in the schools. We have so many amazing students and teachers. And so thank you so much, Dr. Flam, for sharing that.
My pleasure.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the restructuring of K through 12 Behavior Supports with Mrs. Dawn Harris is going to talk to you about that. And then that will be an item on the agenda to hire, for the hiring of an additional supervisor of special education and Act 93 to be included in the April Board Voting Agenda. So, Mrs. Harris?
Thank you, Dr. McLendon. To follow up on what Dr. Flam said, we do have a lot of great things happening in the district. And as an administrative team, we believe we have the capacity to do even more great things for our students and for our families in the district. And that's what my presentation is really all about this evening. So we have been taking our time to examine practices within the district overall as they relate to Dr. Minor's strategic plan and goals, particularly related to literacy and improved literacy rates and improved graduation rates. And one of those areas that we have been examining in relation to that is our behavior supports for our students in the district who have behavioral needs. There's, research has shown that there's a direct relationship between children's behavior and how well they can learn and how much they can learn. So we believe that behavior supports are a very important component to that overall picture of improving areas within our district, particularly related to Dr. Minor's goals. So the proposal, the bulk of the proposal that I want to talk to you about tonight is going to be in relation to a reallocation of monies that we're already spending on contracted programs to support students with behavioral needs and sort of shifting those monies to support building more capacity within the district, within our own in-house programs to support those students with behavioral needs. And I have two documents that I'd like to utilize to present that proposal to you. Mr. Calamita, if you could present the first document I shared with you. Perfect. Thank you. So our rationale for why we believe building capacity in our in-house programs will improve our outcomes for our students with behavioral needs is centered around a couple of main themes. One of those themes is in relationship to consistent and aligned curriculum. We believe that by reallocating those monies from the contracted programs to developing in-house programs, that gives us a better opportunity to have all curriculum decisions for students participating in those services to be directly really overseen by the principals and the special education supervisors in the district, which will help to keep those curriculum decisions for those students in direct alignment with our strategic goals. Additionally, we feel that bringing those programs in-house and developing them in-house will help our students gain access to the regular education environment. One of the main goals of working with students with special needs is to help them master goals in the areas that they may have needs and challenges in and to help them access as much as possible time with their regular education peers, their typical peers in the regular education environment. By building in-house capacity, we have, would have the ability to have our own staff, including supervisors and principals, working with special education teachers, behavior therapists, social workers, et cetera, to really maximize that time for students and work on the nuances of all the things around integrating students in a building, including lunch and recess and special area classes and really maximizing those opportunities for our students. In addition to that, we believe that bringing programs in-house will help us to develop transition plans for our students with behavioral needs, including students who may be transitioning back from out-of-district placements or simply students that are transitioning from more intensive services to less intensive services within the district. Again, bringing that in-house provides for more consistency and for more ability to collaborate with planning across buildings K through 12 as opposed to just within a building. Bringing the programs in-house will also help us support our child find obligations. So you'll see in the next document, part of our proposal is to increase supervisory capacity with this proposal in order to have special ed supervisors work directly with principals on really developing behavioral interventions, particularly pre-referral before special education services to help students in terms of developing self-regulation skills and developing coping skills. And then, of course, to be able to work in collaboration with principals to determine when it's appropriate to refer a child for special education evaluation and services related to behavioral needs. In addition to that, kind of in tandem, coordination of services and teacher training and professional development, we believe that building in-house capacity gives us more control and accountability over those items in terms of, again, planning across buildings, developing continuums of services that are consistent and being able to align training for staff that are working with those students with behavioral needs directly with what our Exeter expectations are for our students. So what exactly does this look like in terms of what we need to be able to move programs in-house and build capacity? I have that on another sheet for a proposal for you. Mr. Calamita, if you could switch to that one. Thank you. So in the top table on the sheet, I have a breakdown of what we are currently spending on contracted programs for our students with behavioral needs. It roughly totals $1.1 million. And the rest of the page, I kind of broke down for you how we're proposing to reallocate those monies for a net zero cost for next school year so that we can develop capacity in-house and move away from doing the contracted programs. So essentially would involve bringing on two emotional support teachers, those are direct classroom teachers, and creating a K-12 special ed supervisor position that would directly oversee all behavior supports within the district. This would include overseeing emotional support classrooms. It would include helping the principals to develop those really important behavioral interventions, pre-referral to help students gain regulation skills and coping skills. And then also the very big job of coordinating out-of-district placements and supervising the transition between those placements and the districts and really keeping connected with those students so that we know how to plan accordingly for their success when they return here to the district. Also included in this proposal is an increase for the elementary supervisor from 11 months to 12 months. In examining our practices, we've also learned that we need more capacity and support in the area of early transition, early intervention transition planning for our students coming out of early intervention services and into our kindergarten classrooms. The rest of the bulk of the reallocation of monies is focused then on the professional services that would be needed to support our in-house programs. And that includes behavior specialists, social workers, and behavior technicians, which are all really key ingredients in determining success for students who have behavioral needs. And then additionally, we've earmarked monies for reinvestment in intervention services and additional behavior supports for students pre-referral to help students gain those skills that we previously discussed. In addition to the reallocation of that $1.1 million, we've also included in here a reallocation of monies that we've been spending on contracted school psychologist services for the last several years. At this point, we're proposing to move that position to the bargaining unit as well for all of the reasons that I talked about on the rationale in terms of having someone who is consistent within our program, who can help to provide counseling for our students who have behavioral needs as well as provide consistency and collaboration across the buildings in terms of school psychologist supports. So as you can see, our total ends up being the same. It's a net zero cost for the 2021-2022 school year. We do anticipate increases over time regardless of whether we're using contracted services or doing those services with our own staff simply because costs do increase over time. Finally, I would just like to kind of go back to the beginning of where I started, which is that we really do believe that we have tremendous capacity here to do great things for our families and for our students. And this is part of that overall picture of really maximizing our potential and providing equitable services for all of our families within the district. Thank you.
So Dawn, how did we reach the conclusion that we needed to switch from Laurel Life?
So in examining our practices overall in relationship to behavior supports in the district, and we have a variety of supports available, not just Laurel Life, we strongly believe that-
But this is replacing Laurel Life though, correct?
We strongly believe that having more focus of control and accountability over programming increases the outcomes of those programs. It's why the district built up their autistic support several years ago. It's why you have an array of supports for students with multiple disabilities. And so really, this is just another venue where we're increasing that in-house capacity.
Okay. And what are the metrics that are going to tell us that we're successful?
So really, those metrics are individualized student programs and whether or not they're achieving their outcomes outlined in their IEPs.
Okay, and we're not doing that now?
We are doing that now. What we're saying is we're looking-
No, we're not achieving the outcomes.
We're looking to increase our ability to achieve outcomes for kiddos.
Okay. So back in 2019, when we had this discussion, one of the things that Laurel Life pitched to us, actually a lot of things that Laurel Life pitched to us. And I, and I want to be very cognizant of the fact that, you know, there are many people on the phone or on this Zoom that, that weren't part of this process back in 2019. But one of the quote-unquote selling points was that Eastern York School District saved in a four-year period $5.28 million when they pushed their service to the outside. And I think that one of the things I would imagine, that one of the things the board predicated its unanimous decision on back in 2019 was also a cost savings associated with the program. So I'm going to assume that we're not going to achieve that going forward based on what you just said. There's not going to be a potential for any cost savings relative to what Eastern York had. And I'm just wondering, you know, again, and I've expressed this to you guys before, there was tremendous support for the program back in 2019 as it was presented to the board. And the board voted unanimously to support it. And then less than two years later, we're reversing ourselves. And again, not holding, necessarily holding people accountable. But what I'm really trying to understand is that if the board is again going all in and supporting this decision to the extent that we can, are we going to be able to see some progress? And how are we going to be able to see some progress? Because when this was presented to the board not too long ago, I think there were a fair number of us who were surprised that the current arrangement was not achieving its intended effect.
Well, I think, Mr. Japina, that, you know, as you mentioned, I don't think there's anybody on the administrative team on this call, you know, who was in a central office role at the time that those decisions were made. And I, I believe that, you know, Mrs. Harris was working in another school district in Berks County. And, you know, there are a lot of, as there are with intermediate units, a lot of different programs, presentations, third-party organizations are presented to districts and districts pick and choose those that best meet their needs at, at the current time. The administrative team at the, at the time, 2019, as you referenced, clearly felt that, you know, the internal capacity didn't allow them to meet the behavioral needs of, of students and that they were perhaps spending more than they would like on outplacements, which is the option that usually districts have if they aren't able to service their students internally. So that was a decision that was made. Some other school districts have made a similar decision. Both Mrs. Harris and I have worked as people services directors in other districts where we have overseen programs that were entirely managed in-house with in-house emotional support teachers, with both in-house and contracted BCVAs. And, and as, you know, the women who are currently in charge, the superintendent and people services directors, we feel that our best opportunity to deliver the highest possible programming quality to our students and families in the district at the most reasonable cost as well is through bringing it in-house and having the accountability and control that goes with an in-house program. So at this point, you know, that's what we're proposing. We think that the, you know, the proposal on the table is really a net zero in terms of the costs for the, the current year relative to in-house employees versus contracted employees. And as, as far as measuring the success of the program, I think, you know, Mrs. Harris alluded to this, we're always measuring the success of any given program by the success of the students contained within that program. And one of the factors that's particularly helpful with students who have IEPs is that is built right into their IP goals. So there's very specific metrics about their goals and whether or not they're meeting and achieving those goals. And so certainly, we can look at that on a case-by-case basis and to some extent, the aggregate. Although I will say that the population of students who have severe emotional needs or significant behavioral needs is small. And so, you know, trying to make broad stroke conclusions about, you know, individual behaviors and their success is difficult. But we can certainly look at it a case-by-case basis through their IEPs as we always do with students with IEPs.
So how will the program look different for families and students? And how will it look different to teachers in the classroom?
So again, I don't think that necessarily it will look terribly different beyond the fact that we'll be using our own internal employees and the benefits that having our own internal employees confers in terms of our ability to include them in all kinds of professional development, et cetera. And then the support specifically for the item of the Act 93 Special Education Supervisor, who would oversee these programs internally as well as our external placements, really having a single point of contact that again, was a district employee and Act 93 member who was specifically making sure that this population of students had exactly what they needed to be successful, that the teachers who worked with them in the special education classroom, who worked with them in the general education classroom, as well as the building administrators were all supported by that individual. And having an Act 93 person who was watching both our students who were placed internally as well as our students who were placed externally to determine at what point we may need to switch to one direction or the other. When we can no longer service a student internally and they need to be externally serviced or, or vice versa. I think having that very key role will prove to be much more supportive to our building principals and ultimately to our teacher teams and our families. I can say as a building principal myself, that was always a challenge. And when I had a special ed supervisor who was really dedicated to that, it allowed me to, you know, have the opportunity to look at other areas of my school that needed improvement and, and have a real partner to look at, at that particular facet of behavior, which can be extremely challenging in a school.
One of the things that Laurel Life talked about was using a trauma-informed model and bringing students back into the least restrictive environment. Are we changing philosophy on how we're dealing with some of this?
No, I think, you know, to piggyback a lot, Dr. Minor said what we're really talking about here is taking broader strokes at more comprehensive plans and programming for students with behavior supports and behavior needs within the district as opposed to just looking at one targeted program.
And about how many students will be impacted?
Many, many, many students in the district who require behavior interventions, both pre-referral and in special education.
So how many, how many is that? Like, how many is many, many, many? Like, everybody with IEP or? Because I believe we had somewhere like-
No, again, we're talking about broader strokes of both working collaboratively with principles, principals for students who are currently in tiers of intervention, pre-referral, who need supports and help in terms of learning self-regulation skills.
So you're expanding the capabilities of-
Yes.
So, so how many, how many actual students are with Laurel Life right now?
So I just, I just want to go back for one second, Mr. Japina. Mrs. Harris, I'm not sure everybody who may be watching or even on the board is, is familiar with the term of pre-referral and knows what that means in terms of student count. So I just want to clarify that. So we have, we have students who have behavioral and emotional needs who have been identified by a school psychologist and then they receive services through their IEP. There's also any number of students, really potentially all students, who to some varying degree can use support with their behavior. And so you can do that through a system of interventions, broad, school-wide interventions, where you're encouraging students to have better behavior and then more targeted interventions for students who struggle more with their behavior. So I think part of what, when Mrs. Harris says, you know, many, many students, it's not just the, the simple case count of the students who might find themselves getting the supports of specifically an emotional support teacher or behavioral support teacher through an IEP, but the potential for all students, especially as we think about kindergarteners coming in, first graders coming in, to have a team of people who are more focused on making sure that behaviors are something that we teach explicitly and implicitly, not just expect students to always come to the table knowing how to do. So I think when we talk about being able to expand our programs internally, it's also that piece of prior to a referral, prior to a test, prior to have, you know, being identified as special education, being able to, to have a more comprehensive program that looks not just the academic needs of all students but the behavioral needs of all students. So I just wanted to clarify that because I don't know that everybody's familiar with the term pre-referral.
But it seemed to me that the way this was presented to us last, you know, if you, you can actually read the minutes from May 14th of 2019 if anybody's interested. But I mean, they, they actually addressed specific numbers in classrooms. I was just wondering if in this transition, we will be getting specific numbers that are coming into this program, the, the components of this program, if you talked about a sort of a net-net, right? So, so it zeros out. So one would assume that if it's zeroing out, we're zeroing out what we have and bringing everything into what we, what we are going to potentially put in place. So I would imagine that a certain number of those people in that program now are coming over. That's what I was just trying to get at is-
Yeah, so I, I understand. I'm, I'm sorry if I misunderstood, Mr. Japina. So I think that there are no, as a consequence of this, there is no anticipation on our part whatsoever that any students who are currently with us in Exeter schools would be going anywhere else, nor is there any expectation that any students who are currently placed out would be coming back into Exeter schools as, as a result of this transfer into in-house programming. So I, I think perhaps, you know, when this conversation was, was held a couple of years ago, again, one of the motivators was to try to, and, you know, and often this is the case, you know, I've been in school districts where they've begun their own in-house autistic support programs. And they've talked about being able to service more students who are currently placed outside of the school. In, in this particular case, we're not making any kind of assurances to the school board or the community or the community that a certain number of students who are outplaced will be coming in or vice versa. There's really no expectation specifically to change any student's placement as a result of this. So I, I think if that's what you were looking for, they're, they're really, the answer is just that they're, we're not, we're not seeking to do this. Now, as a happy consequence, if over time we do a better job with the pre-referral process and we have more students getting support earlier in their school careers and then they have less intensive needs and then ultimately don't require a placement out or because we have a better transition process to bring students in, those would be positive outcomes, but they don't, but we're not presenting anything to the board from a financial perspective that counts on the movement of any students in or out of our program to achieve any of the financial aspects of this. It's simply a demonstrating that we can provide in-house programming for the same cost as third-party programming and we think do a better job as a result.
Just my final question. Have we spoken to sort of a cross-section of families about what we're looking to do?
So we've had some preliminary conversations throughout the school year in terms of increasing behavior supports and improving behavior supports within the district. And as we move forward with improving those supports and building capacity, family input will be a part of that, of course, in terms of helping to garner stakeholder input and improve as we go, not just behavior supports in special education particularly, but with all supports in special education.
And what do you see as your timeline for that?
Well, based on this proposal in terms of improving behavior supports, we're looking at doing some of that work now here in the spring and then utilizing the summer to kind of build that capacity and then continuing throughout the next school year in order to build that capacity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Japina. You always ask such great questions. Are there any more comments or questions?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Fidler.
Will, will this transition to the new pro, to the in-house program obviate the need for any contracted services?
No, we will still have contracted services within special education and some of the professional services that we'll utilize to support behavior supports within the district will be contracted supports, but we'll have direct control over those and direct control over the agencies we utilize to do that.
And are those contracted services included in the budgetary?
Yep, that's in that, that line item labeled professional services on the proposal.
Okay. Another question. How many students are currently placed outside of the district? You referred to those students several times. And how will that change with the new program?
So that's kind of what Dr. Minor was speaking about in terms of this proposal isn't related to any kind of effort to necessarily bring back a certain number of students from out-of-district programming. And I, I hear what you're saying, the lens of, you know, when you guys talked about behavior supports previously, that really was the lens of looking at, you know, where your out-of-district kids were and trying to bring them back into some type of contracted program. Really what determines whether or not a student needs to remain in an out-of-district program versus coming back is their progress in terms of gaining skills and our relationship and connection that's built in terms of tracking their progress and helping them with transition. And that's part of why we have in this proposal that additional supervisor, to really be able to oversee that so that we're making sure that students who need to continue in out-of-district placements because of their level of need are doing so, but students that might be ready to transition back do indeed have a successful transition back into the district.
Okay, we don't, we don't know how many or how many kids are currently?
Our total out-of-district numbers are on the enrollment report that gets shared with the board. And I believe they are working on sharing that currently. So that the updated number will be on there.
Dawn, just, just to clarify what you just said. You're saying that our out-of-district placement numbers, we get them regularly on a monthly basis and the one for April is the one that will be updated shortly.
Yep.
You know, those are the, the out-of-district placements. Are they necessarily in an RTF?
No, so we have an array of students in an array of different out-of-district placements, not all necessarily related to behavioral needs. So we have some students who are in out-of-district placements that are private schools for students with autism, who just require a very intensive level of support related to their needs related to autism. Same is true. We have students in out-of-district placements who have multiple disabilities and their needs require more intensive services than we are able to offer here on campus. So they're not all residential facilities. Many of them are private schools geared towards students with special needs. Some of them are alternative placements related to behavior. There's a variety.
Okay, and are the costs for those students included on the, on your sheet?
No.
What, what would the cost for those students be?
Our out-of-district total, I can get that number for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I have a question. I have, I have a question. This is Dave Hamburger. Dawn, is this it? Would you characterize this as a K to 12 program?
I would characterize this as a K through 12 restructuring of behavior supports, yes.
Okay.
Which includes an array of programs and, and services.
Right. And we have two teachers for the program that I'm, are we, do we have some teachers who are currently employed? They're going to integrate into this?
We do. That's just to increase capacity. We do have some teachers in district who are already categorized as emotional support teachers.
Okay, so we would, you would envision a classroom at the K to four level, maybe five, six, seven through, seven through nine and 10 through 12?
Yep. Some of that, like I said, some of that already exists. These two particular positions would fill the high school and the elementary need.
Okay, and just in one elementary school?
Yeah.
Okay.
Typically, typically districts do not have an emotional support classroom in every elementary building if they have multiple elementary.
Right, right, right. And they would feed, the other elementary schools would feed a single elementary school program or classroom?
Correct, very similar to what you might do with autistic support programs based on the number of students who might need that support.
So would you envision four teachers in the program, five teachers in the program total? I mean, dedicated to emotional support services?
So right now, in-house, I believe we have three teachers full-time dedicated to doing this kind of work. And then we would add these additional two, so that would be five.
And all the teachers are full-time? There's no?
Yeah.
Okay. And are these programs considered full-time, part-time, itinerant, resource room? What's, how, how would they, how are they typically kind of characterized?
So specifically about emotional support classrooms, they offer a range of supports and services. Not to get too technical, but they would be itinerant, supplemental or full-time based on the needs of the students, much like you would have in a learning support classroom. So students who only need a little bit of support and a little bit of remediation in a certain area might go for a small chunk of time. Students who would need more intensive supports might spend more of their day in that type of classroom to get the level of support that they need. But really creates an opportunity for us to customize that for our students.
Okay. And, and, and we, we have a support position called BCBA. Could you familiarize folks with that acronym? You know, what that stands for and what that, what that individual would do? And is that a contracted position or hired by the district?
So we currently have one that's, that is within the bargaining unit. The additional ones would be part of the professional services line item of this proposal. But VCBA stands for a Board Certified Behavior Analyst and they're really key in the success for any behavior support program. So they have specialized certification that lends itself and their expertise to specifically designing behavior support plans for students and helping staff, including building administrators, other teachers, other staff members that might be working with these students to help them build their level of understanding and expertise in terms of specialized and customized plans for the students.
And districts typically contract for those kind of, those kind of service personnel or, or do they hire?
A mix. It's a generally a mix of things. Very often you'll see where there's one that's part of the bargaining unit, but then they contract additional BCBA services. Some districts do bring more than one into the bargaining unit. Some districts, if they have a really great agency that they're working with, might choose to contract all of that out based on their relationship with that agency.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Anybody else have anything to ask or comment? Okay, then we'll move on. Thank you, Mrs. Harris and Dr. Minor and your team for putting together, you know, this really well-thought-out restructuring of our behavior supports. Well, we're going to move on then to item C. This is an information item will be presented by Dr. Flamm on the Exeter Township School District Comprehensive Plan. Hey, Dr. Flamm.
Thanks, Dr. McLendon. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and see if I can find her. Not sure why I can't.
Would you like me to just share it?
Yeah, if you would, Jeff, thank you. Thank you. As you know, every three years, the district must formalize its plan and communicate the plan to the state. It's known as the comprehensive plan. And this would be the plan for years 2021 through 2024. And Dr. Winters compiled the plan with input from his committee. And so this is the, the formal presentation of the district's plan. So there's not a whole lot new that you'll hear in this comprehensive plan because it really mirrors Dr. Minor's plan, which she has outlined for you throughout the school year. And it, it focuses on our three main goals, the first of which is 100% students proficient literacy by grade three. The second goal being that 100% of students are proficient in mathematics by grade seven. And finally, the third 100 is 100% of students graduating on time. And so really the, the, the district plan is formalized and sent to the state for documentation. But our three main goals are 100, 100, 100 goals that have been shared with you throughout the school year form the basis for this comprehensive plan. And so the initial part of the plan works through our, our value statements, works through our mission and, and vision statements and establishes the, the basis for the plan. And it identifies the participants who had input, including district administrators, building administrators, staff members, parents, community members and so forth, who were invited to participate on a committee and, and share their input and review the goals and the action steps and so forth. And so the, the plan uses a ready, set, go format. That ready part is establishing those value statements and the, the understanding of, you know, what areas we want to address. The second part of the plan establishes the, the, the ready part of it, if you will. So, you know, establishing our, our goals, our three main goals. And then the third part where the go establishes the action plan for how we're going to accomplish those goals. So that would include professional development. It would include specific action steps in terms of programming that's going to be utilized in the classroom and how we're going to make sure that those programs are used to the best of our ability to achieve the outcomes that we're looking for, the 100, 100, 100 outcomes. So for example, this summer, we'll be doing a lot of work around literacy at the K four level, K two with foundations, certainly F and P classroom book clubs and interactive read-alouds, phonics and word study, junior grade books and core knowledge in social studies and science to build students' content knowledge. And so, you know, those types of things with professional development and those programs to target that goal of 100% proficiency with literacy by grade four. In terms of mathematics, we've already started to see First in Math being utilized along with Dreambox will continue to target students through targeted interventions, identifying gaps and making sure that our adaptive supports for students are in place. So at the five, six level, five through eight level, we've been using IXL. We've been very pleased with our work with First in Math at the K six level to build fact fluency, which has been something lacking in the district. And so the combination of the conceptual knowledge through investigations and CPM along with procedural knowledge and fact fluency through First in Math. One of the areas that we want to ensure is that there's smooth transition between the investigations program being utilized K five and the CPM program used six through nine. And we haven't done a whole lot of work with that. And so we want to make sure that that vertical alignment is taking place, that those conversations are taking place and using a collaborative approach to make sure that those two programs blend as well as possible. And finally, our third goal of 100% graduation rate. You know, certainly we're looking at a number of things at the high school level, but consistently throughout the district, we want to build a strong foundation with K four literacy, which will impact both literacy and mathematics. We want to really target our math programs to make sure that students moving to the high school level are very well-prepared. Once students are at the high school level, we want to target them with mentoring and, and using our, our teachers as mentors and our counselors and checking in and connecting with students who, particularly students who are at risk, to make sure that we're staying on top of students and, and helping them along the way. We'll be investigating our senior high schedule next year as well. And we'll be looking at our programs to make sure that, you know, we have everything that we think we need in place for students to, to graduate. So our three goals of 100% proficiency in literacy by grade three, 100% proficiency in mathematics by grade seven and 100% graduation rate will form the, the foundation of our comprehensive plan. Again, it's, it's not anything that you haven't heard because it mirrors Dr. Minor's plan for the district. And so this is simply the formalization of that plan sent to the state. This plan must be available for review for 30 days prior to a vote. And again, the plan itself is not due to the state by November, until November 2021. So it will be available for your review. It will be available on the website for public review. And then we'll be looking for a vote at the May board meeting for the comprehensive plan.
Okay, are you finished, Dr. Flamm?
I am, thank you.
Okay. All right, are there any, buddy, have any questions, comments for Dr. Flamm or any administration?
Eric, I noticed at the very beginning, could you scroll up to the top of the document? There are five, actually the next page. There are five groups of educational value statements or five components, students, staff.
Right.
Administration, yet the nine statements are all the same. Can you explain that? Why there isn't a different set of statements for each component?
Uh, I, I think because we, we all value the same things. We're, you know, we're all after the same things. Despite the fact that we have different roles to play, you know, we're, we're targeting the same beliefs and same values for, uh, for our students.
Okay. Uh, and I noticed some, some rather elegant parallels between our goals and the, um, US News and World Report ranking of our high school, test scores, uh, literacy, uh, mathematical competence, and, and certainly the graduation rate. But I don't see anything about another factor that was, uh, used in the US News and World Report ranking, uh, and that's college, uh, the college readiness index. Our graduation rate ranking was 419 in the state, and our college readiness index, uh, rank was 337 in the state. Is there any reason why that, uh, college readiness index isn't part of this plan?
I, I don't know a specific reason for that, Mr. Fiddler.
I can speak a little bit to it, Dr. Flam. I, first of all, um, Mr. Fiddler, the, the state's comprehensive planning process, there, there, it is designed to be tightly aligned to the assessments that the state itself issues, the PSSA and the keystones. And so they, you know, have parameters that say that school districts need to, you know, tightly align themselves with those, with those, uh, specific, uh, assessments, the PSSA and the keystone. And so although what you talk about is certainly a concern of ours, it's something that we're looking at as a district as a whole. When we talk about our comprehensive plan that we send off to the state, it really is intended to be, um, a little more, uh, basic than that in terms of things like proficiency in reading and math proficiency, uh, in terms of having 100% of students graduate. And then I think, you know, long-term as a district, obviously we're looking at, at college, uh, readiness. We're also looking at career readiness and other aspects of that. But this is, you know, not our forever plan. This isn't our permanent plan. This is our comprehensive plan at the moment. And there really are some kind of gateways that we need to cross through as a district. Particularly when we look at, you know, the equitable distribution of proficiency across different subgroups, um, the difficulties that we have with literacy, those sorts of things. So while, um, college readiness, the way that US News and World Report, um, describes it, and they describe it primarily, well, almost exclusively through, um, the AP exam, that's not necessarily the methodology that the state or other, uh, institutions use to, uh, determine the success or failure of a school district as a whole. So that is important to me. It's important, I know to you. It's important to many members of our board and our community that we have that, uh, that benchmark around US News and World Report, but it doesn't tightly align with what the state's looking for in the comprehensive plan. So that's why you don't see it, uh, in that document.
Okay. Well, is there a separate initiative that addresses, um, our AP program?
There's not one in terms of, of the comprehensive plan. This is again, uh, one of those, you know, kind of almost now bureaucratic, I would say. Whoops, that we have to jump through as a school district. There was a time when the strategic planning process was meant to be a genuine, uh, time when school districts, you know, really thought about what they wanted for their future and was much more freewheeling. And then the state really kind of clamped down and said, we wanted to be focused on these, you know, specific areas. And so that's why a lot of school districts have gone off on their own and done a parallel process, much like we've talked about as a board and, uh, team of 10 with a superintendent in terms of our goals. So I think as we continue to evolve towards those goals, we can certainly, uh, each year as we reestablish our own look at how we want to frame, uh, college and career readiness around the AP exam as well as other metrics. But it wouldn't necessarily find its home in this comprehensive planning document that is really specific to, uh, meeting the requirements of PDE, not necessarily our broader vision as a district.
Right. But that's why I asked the question the way I asked it. Do we have a separate initiative within the district that addresses those shortcomings in our college readiness?
So we don't have an initiative per se at the moment. We are, um, as you may recall, we are right now looking at planning for the high school all throughout next year. We've worked on the K8 plan and we have begun, um, Mr. Campbell and I meeting with groups of students. We're meeting with 12 students, you know, a, a week for the remainder of the year as the foundational student input piece of a, a whole redesign of the high school and inclusive in that will be an initiative towards, uh, making sure that our programs are rigorous and, and, and aligned, um, with the US News Report and World Report and other collegiate measures. But at this point, I don't want to say that we have an initiative per se because we haven't decided yet what, or haven't, I don't, I don't say decided, but haven't fully uncovered what are the root causes of our, uh, weak performance in those areas? Is it, is it about the schedule? Is it about the way we prepare students for those courses? Is it about the, um, the restraints we put on certain groups of students in terms of their ability to take those courses? So we're still at, at an early phase of trying to really uncover what, um, keeps us from being where we'd like to be. And so I'm hesitant to say initiative per se, Mr. Fiddler, because I think we're still in a discovery phase. But certainly once we get to a point where we have a better sense, we will have an initiative and a, and a well-thought-out plan that we'll share with the board relative to comprehensive changes at the high school that will lead us towards, um, hopefully a much better, uh, just experience for our students. And then, uh, you know, uh, a subsequent increase in our ranking, that would be evidenced in US News and World Report.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Fiddler. Anyone else want to share comments, questions?
I, I do have, I, I do have a question. Um, I, you know, I, I note that, or I'm noticing there that we have two primary academic benchmarks. You know, one has to do with reading, you know, 100% proficiency by third grade and math, seventh grade, 100% proficiency. What, what's the difference there? Why, why reading, uh, third grade, math, seventh grade? Uh, I'm, it was that sort of, is there, was there a rationale behind that or is that sort of chosen?
There's definitely, there's definite rationale behind that, uh, Dr. Hamburger. So reading by grade three is, is really a well-established benchmark throughout the literacy community. That is considered by most to be the window, uh, pre-K through third grade, where students have the greatest capacity to quickly, uh, attain the skills that they need, both in terms of decoding and comprehension to ultimately be successful readers. And that if you miss that, that window, it becomes increasingly more difficult to have students, uh, acquire literacy skills. And oftentimes students end up in special education as a result. Um, you know, there's some classic, um, things that are thrown out like, you know, California, you know, determining how many prisons they need to build by how many students can read proficiently by fourth grade. It's really a benchmark, uh, time period in terms of student reading success. So, so that's why third grade is picked. It's also, you can see when, for instance, the state starts assessing reading through the PSSA in third grade, right? That's really the time that you can start looking at that decoding comprehension piece coming together. And beyond third grade is when we kind of move away entirely from decoding as a focus to comprehension. And then you, you really have to be able to, a lot of people talk about the idea of learning to read up till third grade. And then beyond third grade, you're reading to learn, right? So you're actually having to have those skills to acquire math knowledge, science knowledge, et cetera. In terms of math, you know, we have, uh, targeted seventh grade as the, the time period where most students are in the pre-algebra, algebra phase. Algebra one is the other thing that's considered a benchmark for ultimate, uh, student success around mathematics. So if you can see students obtain proficiency by seventh grade, that is the pre-algebra phase. And then, um, then you look for them to be proficient and successful in algebra one. And again, you can see that the state, um, has a keystone in algebra one very specifically because that's considered that benchmark math in order to have future success in math. So by getting students to read, uh, proficiently in third grade, that sets the foundation up for them to be able to be successful in math because so much of math is comprehension in addition to calculation. And while we're focusing on reading, we're of course developing mathematical skills. Uh, as mentioned earlier, we brought in First in Math so that, um, while kids are learning more conceptual math through their general core program, they're also working on their fact fluency skills, those sorts of things that they'll need to be proficient. But ultimately, um, you know, there are a lot of other skills that go into, to math. So three and seven are kind of considered benchmark, um, levels for, uh, mathematics and for reading. And then of course, ultimately, the final benchmark of a, of a school's success in terms of a, a baseline, certainly not our, our ceiling, uh, is in fact getting students to graduate. So that, that's how we determine those three timeframes.
Okay. Uh, thanks, Dr. Minor.
Hey, you said, does anyone else have anything?
I just, I wanted to, um, make a quick statement. Uh, Kim briefly alluded to, or Dr. Minor briefly alluded to the meetings that, um, her and Mr. Campbell are now having with students on a regular weekly basis. And I just wanted to say thank you, um, for that. I know that several board members had encouraged and suggested that. And I'm sure that, uh, part of the motivation behind doing that was just the value that you guys saw inherent in that, um, opportunity. But I just wanted to say thank you publicly for doing that.
Absolutely. It's been a genuine pleasure. We've, um, had several meetings and, and true, truly after each one, Mr. Campbell and I meet and we talk about how much we learned, uh, from the students. And already there, we have come away with some very specific suggestions for improvement that aren't just being included in our long-range planning, but are things that we're taking action on immediately. So, um, it's been extremely beneficial and we're really looking forward to continuing. And I think it will really help strengthen the foundations of, um, you know, what we're calling the revisioning of the high, the high school beyond just, you know, looking at the schedule, but really looking at the, the high school in its totality. So thank you for, for your acknowledgement of that, but it really is just a pleasure in and of itself.
Okay. If there are no more, uh, comments or questions, then we're going to move on to our last, uh, item for the Education Committee on the Education Committee Agenda, and that is a district calendar revision. We previously voted on the calendar, uh, for the 2021, 2022 school year, but there is a, a revision which, uh, Dr. Flam is going to, uh, tell us about. Hey, Dr. Flam?
That's right. Uh, there's one revision specifically around, uh, spring conferences. Initially, uh, the calendar, uh, for, uh, March 9th through 11th, uh, indicated, um, the ninth and 10th for conferences, but the 11th as a, as a full day. And after further discussion and consideration, um, we'd like to add the 11th back in as a half-day, uh, for spring conferences, uh, seeing the value in that. And in doing so, uh, the February 8th day, which was initially an act 80-day, February 18th, uh, which was initially an act 80-day, uh, would become a full student day, uh, in place of the 11th. So that's the one revision, uh, being proposed for the, uh, calendar that was approved by the, by the board previously.
Are there any, uh, questions for, um, Dr. Flam about the calendar? Okay, then this item will be on the, uh, voting agenda. Um, the revision to the calendar will be on the voting agenda for our next voting meeting in April. Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Flam.
Thank you.
And that concludes the agenda for the Education Committee.
Okay. Thank you, um, Dr. McLendon. I just want to clarify then, uh, moving forward, we're going to, um, at the end of the meeting, we will not be adding the comprehensive plan yet to the voting meeting. Is that correct? That's later in the year?
That would be, uh, for May.
For May. Okay. Thank you. Um, okay. Moving on then, the Finance Facilities and Audit Committee, Mr. Aaron's.
Uh, thank you, Allison. Um, Dr. Minor, do you just want to get into your presentation?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Aaron's. Uh, so this is an exciting time for Mr. Fike and I. This is our very first budget presentation to the board. Uh, he, as the new business administrator, and of course me as the new superintendent. So he, he has put a tremendous amount of work, as, as all business men, business managers do, into all of the underlying details of this plan. Um, and then beyond that, he and I, you know, reviewed, uh, budget presentations from past years. We really thought about how does the budget fit into, um, the comprehensive vision, uh, that we share or working on sharing for the future of Exeter in terms of our shared goals, some of which were discussed tonight about students proficiency in reading and math and graduation. And really sought to, um, through our combined efforts, have a budget presentation. And again, this is a preliminary budget presentation. This is really the first, uh, look for the school board and for the community, uh, at, at what we're thinking for the budget in a way that, um, was really focused on a narrative and was contextual. And so often budget presentations in school districts are really driven by spreadsheets and little tiny lines with lots of numbers, and they become difficult, uh, often for school board members to fully understand as well as the community. And so we really wanted to take a, an approach that we hope will, will be found to be much more, uh, friendly to the community as a whole and to the school board in particular. And then of course, underlying all of these are the, are the very specific details in the budget book, um, you know, which Mr. Fike can provide, uh, any, any components of or in its entirety to school board members as we move through this process. So Mr. Fike and I will be doing this as a joint presentation. You'll see us taking turns on individual slides. And, uh, we hope that, uh, you enjoy our presentation. Mr. Calamito will be helping us go through the slides. So, Mr. Calamito, if you can go to the first slide for us. So we're going to just begin tonight with, um, a reminder of some of the focus areas. You remember that our, the focus areas came out of what was initially my interview with the district in terms of what an entry plan would look like. Um, and in that, uh, interview, I talked about, uh, several focus areas that I would want to gain information on through interviews with a variety of stakeholder groups, reviews of documents, et cetera. And then in November, uh, I shared with you as a board the findings from that entry plan. And then in December, the analysis and next step. So I've chosen just a couple of those focus areas that really pertain to items within the budget. And I just wanted to use those as a way of bringing cohesion to the budget in terms of the overall vision. So this first focus area, uh, pertains to the organizational capacity and the alignment of the district. Some of my findings as part of my entry plan were that the district was overstaffed, uh, to varying degrees at all levels, uh, that there were two contracts that were unresolved at the start of the year in July when I, I began in this role. Both contracts were, um, resolved, uh, over the course of this year. And that staffing was not tightly aligned to student success. Um, and it had not really been reviewed or revised in recent years in terms specifically of student success. And that the analysis and next steps would be that through attrition and realignment, we would seek to right-size the school district for more efficient and effective, uh, service delivery that ensured that human capital is utilized purpose, purposefully for student success. And that the contracts, um, the ones that we just, uh, were able to settle this year and ones moving forward would be in line with the financial realities of the district while, at the same time, reflecting a genuine, uh, respect and care for our district employees and their wellbeing. So that's one of our focus areas that's pertinent. Mr. Calamito, next slide, please. Another one was Area Three, Operations and Finance. This is kind of the obvious one. Looking to create a budget that reflects the strategic vision of the district. Again, that's why we're incorporating these focus slides. So you can see the way that the budget intertwines with that. Balancing financial realities, especially being conscious of tax burden for our residents and sustaining the pursuit of excellence in the district. And then committing, uh, to maintaining a healthy fund balance. We talked about this, um, again, when I reviewed this plan in December. The importance of a fund balance and really as a, as a leadership team, school board and superintendent and business administrator, really committing to not relying on fund balance withdrawals, uh, to offset tax increases, because fund balance is ultimately really an important factor in the long-term financial health of a district. And then, uh, again, in terms of next steps, you know, that we would present the budget, which we're beginning this evening, and then, uh, continue to work with the board on, um, balancing those financial realities with the needs of, uh, the quality of the school district as well as protecting that fund balance. And then the final focus area, Mr. Calamito. Uh, is Area Five, and that is again, student achievement, which we've referenced several times this evening. We've talked about those goals, but really ultimately making sure in that very last bullet and each one that we are actually investing in the resources, the professional development, the, and the staff itself to accomplish those academic, uh, goals for our students. Next slide. One of the things last year, um, I again hadn't started yet at the time that the budget was being discussed, but at that point I knew, um, that I was the selected candidate. And so I was watching the budget process intently, um, from home as a spectator. And I, one of the things that we repeatedly, or I repeatedly heard the board express concern over, if you take yourselves back to March, April, May of last year, was what was the impact of COVID-19 going ultimately to be on our community? if you take yourselves back to March, April, May of last year, was what was the impact of COVID-19 going ultimately to be on our community? At that time, we were already seeing concerns about people losing their jobs. What were the financial impacts? Were businesses going to close, et cetera? And so, you know, that had, I think, impact on a lot of board members' thinking relative to their comfort level with taxation. Several of you referenced, you know, your specific concerns about how much uncertainty there was. And so one of the first things Mr. Fike and I wanted to do was take a look back and say what in fact was the impact of COVID-19 on the 2021 budget. Among those items was tax collections. In 2021, Exeter tax collections did not change from the previous year. The earned income tax, Exeter saw only a 0.04% decrease in earned income tax. And again, we want to be really clear that we recognize for individual members of the community, the financial impact of COVID-19 may have been far more dramatic. And we certainly have an appreciation for that and empathy for that as well. But in terms of the district financial picture as a whole, it was a very minor decrease in earned income tax that was experienced. And then the real estate transfer tax, in fact, is on track to be higher than it was pre-pandemic. Mr. Fike, was there anything about any of those items that you wanted to just elaborate on further?
Yeah, on the earned income tax, certain districts in the county had a lot higher decrease. Some had a slight increase. We basically remained the same. And I think it really had to do with where the people in the district were working. Were they in the service industry or the regular blue collar workers, you know, those areas? I think retail industry was hard hit in those areas that had a lot of retail. A lot of workers of retail actually went down in earned income. Real estate transfer tax, it's amazing, you know, they can't keep property on the market right now. It's probably got to set a record for us over the last eight years on the real estate transfer taxes.
And then the tax collections themselves, that's the rate of collections?
Yes, and that didn't change from the previous year.
Mr. Calamita, next slide. So I'm going to let Mr. Fike talk about assumptions for the budget.
Okay, I'm assuming the state funding is not going to change. There might be a slight decrease in the ADM count, and that's a three-year average. And the only reason I'm saying a slight decrease, we saw roughly 100 students go out to either private or homeschool, which would not be counted in ADM, so that will be averaged over the next three years. Federal grants, I did not include any revenues from federal grants. There's an S R 2 and S R 3 that's out, probably will not get awarded until the budget comes out. But knowing that that money, the revenue from that money will also be offset on expense. So it basically washes itself out. So I did not include those and didn't even want to guess for those. But, you know, all I know is whatever we get, we have to spend. And it's not allowed to use to offset your operational budget. It has to be things like the S R's. I think 20% must be for learning loss. You can use it for air quality and there's certain other things, but you cannot use it to offset your operational budget. You can't use it to offset the increased charter costs. You can use it to buy technology, things like that. So like I said, we're not including the additional federal grants that are coming out because I don't know when they're going to be awarded. And I also know whenever they are awarded, the expenditure is going to be the same as the revenue. Charter school, I'm assuming enrollment is going to stay current level. I had a meeting with PASBO today, a legislative meeting. And everyone that we talked to that went back full-time since even the fall, they did not get any of their students back. So I wasn't going to assume that we already get students back. It seems like once they got into the charter schools, I think that's the place they're going to keep their children. I'm not assuming that we're going to increase, but I'm also assuming that we're not going to decrease or get those back. Like to see a hit back or charter tuition costs went from 1.4 million to almost 1.9 million. Just shy of 9,000, shy of 1.9 million during this year. Assess values, I'm assuming the assessed values remain at the current levels. I do not see a lot of assessment appeals right now. And if they do start happening, that will hit to the 22, 23 budget year.
I just want to add a couple of things to the slide before we move on. First of all, under the state funding, just for those of you who aren't familiar with the term ADM, ADM refers to the average daily membership, and that's the number of students that are enrolled. And that's the basis for the reimbursement that we get from the state. In terms of the federal grants, there has been some speculation, various articles, opinion pieces, that sort of thing about school districts. Some school districts are, we're seeing likely a couple of million dollars that come to us in Exeter. Some school districts are seeing tens of millions of dollars that are coming to them, school districts like Philadelphia, et cetera. And it's really important, I think, for the community as a whole to understand when they see those numbers. And Mr. Fike did allude to it. But we actually got all the superintendents got a letter from the Republican head of the state legislature reminding us all that that money could not be used, should not be used to balance our budgets in any way, that it was one-time funds that the state would not be replacing. And reminding school districts of the fiscal cliff that many of them fell out off of several years ago when they used one-time grant funds to balance their budget. So everybody is warning all superintendents and school boards from the pass of this associations of superintendents to the I U's, to our legislators, that this is not to be used to balance anybody's budget. And the fiscal consequences of that would be severe. So I think Mr. Fike mentioned that, but I just wanted to reinforce that. As far as charter schools, although we are assuming that our enrollment stays the same, that doesn't mean that we're content with that. We are reaching out to families who are currently in cyber charters. They've been sent letters personally from me. And Dan Wilczek is asking them for meetings, phone calls to talk about what we might be able to do as a district to draw those families who are at cyber charters either back into our brick and mortar programs or if not into those into our district virtual program. So although that's an assumption, that doesn't mean that that's a contentment of ours and we're going to continue to work on that. Mr. Calamita, next slide, please.
Brian, just a quick question. You had mentioned that the federal grants are not included in the budget. Did you remove the corresponding expenses that they would offset?
Yes, when I say federal, I'm saying the new federal. The IDA, Title I, they are in the budget. You know, the things that were always there, I'm just not including the new, if you want, COVID relief packages, the S R 2 and the S R 3 that you're hearing in the news all the time.
Okay.
But the regular programs are in there. The regular 1% that we get every year for IDA, Title, access, those programs are still in there.
Okay, Brian, I think this is your slide.
Okay, revenues, we're still at roughly 69% of our fundings from our local sources. Earned income tax, real estate taxes, fees, et cetera. States, 30% and federal, I have that, Mr. Japina asked. The existing programs that we always have, the IDA, the Title I, the part of the ready-to-learn grant and the access. There's also some smaller ones in there, but those are the major, major programs and federal programs. Okay?
Next slide.
This is pretty hard to read on a pie chart, but I'll give you an example. Regular instruction programs are roughly 42% of our budget. Special ed, 17%, vocational ed, 1.6%, pupil services, 2.98%, structural staff services, 2.98%. I'll just go over some of the major areas. Property plant, the 7.29% of the budget. Debt service, 10%, 10.64% budget. And that's pretty much the same it was previous years. Has it really increased or decreased?
Brian, I have a I have a quick question. Could you speak to a little bit the budgetary reserve? It says $0 there. My recollection was last year we had something like 250 or 200,000.
Last year you had 90,000 there. And that, I think, was to cover the food service. This year I don't expect to cover food service because the federal government made everyone free. So, you know, with what we're doing with weekend meals and we're actually picking up that will make up that deficit this year. And we should probably do the same next year.
I seem to recall that maybe there was
Previous year you had a lot more, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And that budgetary reserve, I mean, you can put it in there, but you're really, I don't want to call it a fudge figure, but you're leaving yourself room to pull money from one ear and see the other. I would rather pull from one budget line item to the other and stay within the budget and not have a cushion factor. Just different feelings. We go to the next one?
So Brian, excuse me, on the pie chart here, is this pie chart generally reflective of what you saw in your prior school district in terms of your expense breakdown?
A little bit, you know, this district has a lot higher debt service percentage-wise, but this district also doesn't go out long-term, which I sort of like. You know, most districts go out 15 to 20 to 25 years where you're out 10, 11 at the max. So your debt service is a lot higher and I think you've deliberately done that so you can pay it all faster and hopefully be out of debt down the road. And that's the only big change I've seen here. You know, when we look at, you know, student services, most of them are around 2 to 2 and 1/4, you're at 2.4. So everything else is pretty well in line. And I think that I saw stand out is most districts are below 8% debt service. Did that answer your question? Next slide. Now, we talked before, back to my interview, and I think Hunter brought this up. You know, we kept on talking about structural deficit. Structural deficit is what you're budgeting, really is you're budgeting more expenditures than you are taking in revenues. So we went back and did a history from 2017 forward. We also looked at the millage from 2017 forward and the percentage of change of millage in each one of those years and the index. So 2017, basically you had a structural deficit of 1.3 million. Raised taxes 3.1%. Next year you had a structural deficit of 949,000. Raised taxes 1.25%. The following year you had a structural deficit of 1.9 million, no raise. Following year, 1 and 1/2%, 2.6%. Last year you had 3.152. This year, projecting or looking for structural deficit, 1.675. When we get further on, I'll show you where that's coming from. Suggesting a 1.9% change. Our index this year is 4%. It will probably start going down over the next three to four years. And that'll happen statewide. This is, they figure this is the peak year for your index. And things will start changing. Unemployment is one of the factors that'll bring it down over the next three years. There's about eight different factors, you know, ability to tax. You know, I hate to say that, the state always looks at the ability of districts taxed to, you know, come up with their adjusted index. But, you know, it's just the way it is.
Brian, can you say a little bit more? Because there's some years where, like 16, 17, the district taxed at the index and other years where they didn't. How is the index derived in terms of what are the implications in, you know, for a community? How does the state come up with the index?
Well, the index, it's based off the unemployment figures. It's based off the consumer price index, off the, I don't want to say Fed rate, but your inflation index and also the local, they have an index called the ability to tax or local revenue index. All these factors go into this formula and they come out with a statewide index of, I think this year was like 3.4%. Then you take those other factors in and get an adjusted index. This year it was 4% maximum. The index is the maximum amount you're allowed to increase your taxes without going to either special referendum or taking exceptions like for special ed or debt service. But, you know, basically most districts have already taken those exceptions. There was exception for your pension programs before, but the pension is only increasing about 4/10s of, you know, half a percent a year. We don't see those 5% increases anymore. So I don't know many districts that go over the index. First of all, I think there's only one district in the state that passed a referendum that the voters passed to go above the index. And I think that was State College and they spent over $100,000 on advertising just to educate the people why they wanted to go over that index. To me, it's, this is what you deal with and this is our maximum we can increase taxes and we have to budget around that. You know, I prefer not to have any tax increase, but, you know, we're dealing with a structural deficit. And we're also dealing with increased wages. We have two contracts signed or settled this past year. They have building raises, they have building benefits. And when we get further, you see we actually decreased our expenses.
So let's go ahead and go on to the next slide.
So the average assessed value is 108,247. Our 2020 mills was 33.6073. So the average school tax would be, now I'm saying school tax, I'm not including county or local, would be 3,638. A 1.9% increase in the mills would be 34.2458. That would give your average school tax of 37.07, which would be an average annual increase of 59.12 or breaking into a month, $5.75.
So just to go over a couple of those figures, so the assessed value is the average assessed value of a home in Exeter? And just want to remind everybody what a mill is?
A mill is $1 on every $100 of assessed value.
And so the average school tax in 2022 with a 1.9 increase would be 3,707. So that's a $69 increase over last year for the average Exeter resident and then a $5.75 a month increase for the average Exeter resident. And that presumes a homeowner as the average resident. Is that correct?
Yes.
Next slide.
Okay, the district has a fund balance policy that you maintain at least a 5% and not more than 8% of budget expenditures for the fiscal year. The state requires that you keep under, or no more than 8% unassigned fund balance. And there's different parts of fund balance. Unassigned fund balance is basically what is available for the government body to use during the year. Okay, there's also what they call signed fund balance. And I'm reading right out of the state, my chart of accounts, which I call my accounting bible. But the signed fund balance is an amount intended to be used for a specific purpose as per committee or individual authorized by governing body. These amounts are not restricted or committed. We also have committed, which are things like your accounts payable at the end of the year. Restricted is basically one specific purpose. And then a non-spendable fund balance, most districts don't have much in there. They might have it, they have to keep like $50,000 for an insurance policy, you know, they're deductible. Those types of things you'll see in a non-spendable fund balance. So right now, we are asking to keep the fund balance at 7.11%. And to put that in layman's turn, that's equal to 26 days of expenses. You know, the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association recommends you keep at least two months of expenses in your bank account. Our state says no more than 8%. You know, so we're staying under the 8%, but if, say, the state didn't come out with a budget and we weren't able to bill for taxes in July, we only have 26 days left of expenditures. bill for taxes in July, we only have twenty-six days left of expenditures as of July first.
Next slide.
Excellent. So as of July first of twenty twenty, we had a fund balance of eighteen million five twenty-two. Non-spendable was twenty-one thousand three seventy-nine. And that was basically, I think, uh, due on insurance policies. Uh, committed, uh, two million three hundred and twenty-one eight twenty-one. Basically, accounts payable, all the bills due as of June thirtieth, or actually July first of twenty twenty. Uh, we had assigned of eight million one hundred and seventy thousand eight oh nine and unassigned of eight million eight thousand. Uh, the assignments at eight million one hundred and seventy thousand. There was four point three million or four point three and a half million assigned for future year budget deficits. There was also seven hundred and fifteen thousand assigned, um, for future pension obligations. Uh, there was two million assigned for contractual increases. Now, those contractual increases, when when you assign money, you you basically look at, if you stop operating today, what would still be due, okay? We have, you know, vacation payouts, uh, sick time payout, you know, that's in the contracts. If a person left tomorrow, they would get some, you know, X amount of dollars, uh, that we still owe. That's what the contractual increases are there for. That's what's assigned, uh, for the two million. We also have five hundred and twenty-six thousand assigned for technology equipment down the road. Joe and I are going to come up with a list of those things, but, you know, things like servers, you know, major equipment, uh, those types of things. Uh, license renewal, you know, we have certain programs we have to keep on going, so they assign three hundred and thirty-seven for that. There is talk about replacing the bus radios. There was eight hundred and two thousand assigned there. And, uh, a hundred and sixty thousand for debt service. It's still fine there. They were expecting to have an increase this past year in debt service, but yet we, when we refinanced, we actually had a decrease of about sixty-two thousand. So at the end of this year, we can probably put that into a different category, but that would have to be by board resolution at the end of the year when you assign your fund balances. So if we go to the next slide. So I I have twenty twenty-one budget, but I also have twenty twenty-one actual estimated. So let let's look at what I'm projecting at the end of the year. Uh, because the twenty twenty-one budget and the actual estimate, the big difference is you had a lot more revenue than you expected. That was not budgeted. So you're expecting to use three point one million of of fund balance. I'm projecting right now, and I'll have a a better figure as we go on, but at least the two point four million, you know, fund balance used, not the three point one, so that we're we're in better shape. Unassigned fund balance as of July first of twenty twenty was eight million eight thousand. If I take that two point four million out, which I'm expecting to use, uh, you have remaining unassigned fund balance of five point six million. With this budget that we're proposing, I am asking to use one point six seven five of the assigned fund balance for future budget deficits. If you remember from the previous slide, we had four point three five oh for future budget deficits. I would like to, and then it within three years, to have a balanced budget that our expenditures equal our revenues. You know, use up this assigned fund balance because it has to be used for that purpose, but to bring that down to zero, but to still keep our unassigned fund balance between the five and, uh, eight percent. If we do it this way, we're still, we're staying at seven point one for one percent. And the reason the the change from seven point oh nine to seven point one one is our expenditures are decreasing by four hundred and fifty thousand dollars compared to last year's budget or this year's budget. Did everyone follow me on that?
So Brian, just just so I'm clear, the figure that we want to look at when we're talking about a deficit for this year and how we cover or for, sorry, for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and how we cover that would be five million six hundred eight thousand six hundred twenty-three subtracted from one million six hundred seventy-five five fourteen. Did I get that right?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't.
No, that the, I, I'm not asking to use the unassigned fund balance. You're you're seven percent right now. I I'm not asking you to use that. If you go back to the previous slide.
Yeah, go back to the previous slide because I think that's that's easier to see. Joe, can you go back?
Where it says net assignments. You have already have
Okay.
Assigned four million three hundred and fifty thousand for future budget deficits. Okay, i- if you use unassigned fund balance, you're going to bring your fund balance down below the five percent. But you can use the assigned because you already have it set there for future budget deficits. Uh, what, when I was brought on board, Dr. Minor was brought on board, you wanted to have a balanced budget in future years. You know? And that's my goal, is to knock that four, three, five oh down to zero within three years and have expenditures and revenues equal in three years. No, no more structural deficit, no more spending more than you're taking in a revenue.
So I make, does that make sense, Hunter? I think that's why we
Yeah.
It's hard to say where to put those slides, but I think that one is is easier to see it on the, um, the use of fund balance slide. So let's go ahead to the next slide and then the slide after that.
So on on the next slide then too, just so I understand, is the deficit that we're looking at having this year also coming from that, uh, not assigned for future budget deficits?
I think that's actually easier to see, yeah.
Yes. If you look at the the center where it has the one point six seven five, that's where I'm taking out the use of a sun, assigned fund balance. This past year, the twenty twenty-one, down the two point four million, you had, uh, using unassigned fund balance, uh, not touching the money that was set aside. Uh, originally budgeted three point one five two, but because of the higher revenues, you don't need to to use as much.
And I think
If you would have used that three point one two or three point one five two, you would have brought your fund balance down to six percent. I I, I know we have to stay within the state, but I'd like to be as close to eight percent as possible because twenty-six days of bills is not that great.
Okay, so I think I think one of the things I was missing here too. So when you were talking about what you anticipate are unassigned fund balance at the end of this budget, so, uh, July first, that number will be five million six hundred eight thousand six hundred and twenty-three or seven point eleven percent of total. Okay, all right.
And we're not going to use that. We're going to use the money that was set aside previously.
Yeah.
This year, and some of it, you know, that, and if you go to the next slide, it'll actually show you what it's going to do to the fund balances. So June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, looking at the unassigned fund balance of five, six, oh, eight, six twenty-three, and right above it, uh, assigned fund balance, eight million one seventy eight oh nine. June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two is the the end of this budget we're talking about, the next year's budget. Assigned fund balance using that one point six million from assigned brings that down to six point four nine five uh, assigned and keeping unassigned at five point six oh eight two seven six two three.
So as I, as I did shorthand here in the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year budget of that future year budget deficit, we'd only have two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars with change left.
Right.
Now, that's on paper, that's on paper, so that could change. But you're saying that that would be a year where we still have a budget deficit moving towards.
Yeah, my my goal is to use that up within the next three years and have, at the end of three years, have a budget that's revenue and expenditures equal, that you're not deficit spending, so there's no longer structural deficit.
Okay.
And this year, if if you think about it, we've already, when you go back to the following slides and we we talked a little bit earlier, we actually dropped expenditures down by four hundred fifty thousand compared to last year's expenditures.
I think that's in a, I think that's in a future slide, so we can.
That's on the next slide, actually.
Yeah, I'll try to be more patient, I'm sorry.
No problem. All right, next slide, please.
So you you, Dr. Minor, I, after we went through this, and then, and a lot of things you already put in place, you know, uh, the positions we weren't filling. You know, it's not like we're we're eliminating a positions, but there's positions that came open that, uh, we're not going to fill. I think it's support personnel, can I use the number, Dr. Minor?
Yeah.
There's the thirty-eight positions not filled in support. And we have not heard any complaints. Uh, so.
Now, that that's also not to say that they're not out there. That's just they have not been elevated to the district at a level either by the association or by administrators.
Where we don't, there's no plan to rehire those positions.
Okay, so can you guys add some context on to why we believe that that's an acceptable change and and maybe a a very large scale policy around personnel?
I I can add that I was amazed on how many aides you have here compared to the number of teachers. I I think that was a huge number to most other districts.
That, I mean, I I would agree. I, you know, I said that from the very beginning, we, you know, we're we're really staffed very differently than, uh, most other districts. And, you know, again, you know, trying to take advantage of attrition, which, you know, good or bad, COVID did have a lot of people decide that they didn't want to continue to work in a school setting. And, you know, typically, those papers would come to the superintendent's desk, someone leaves and you sign it and say, you know, refill it and send it back to HR. And with each one instead, you know, I sat down with Dr. Holler, with other people, you know, uh, whether it was individual building principals, et cetera, and said, you know, can we do this some other way? Um, than rehiring for that position? And, you know, in in total, um, you know, there were thirty-eight positions this year that we were able to say, yes, we can meet student needs and run an efficient district. Um, not to say that those people who left their jobs weren't excellent, didn't work incredibly hard, but by just repositioning people, doing some things, uh, differently, more strategically, we were able to, um, not replace those those positions. And, you know, obviously, it added a big impact on our budget, which, you know, we we expected that it that it would.
Is there going to be some more, um, discussion about that in a later slide? Because I have additional questions on that, but I can certainly wait to ask them as well.
Not really, so.
The decrease in expenditures?
Well, for the support staff specifically.
Uh, no, there are no other slides, so you you could ask them now.
Okay, so one of the big things that we had talked about, uh, last year when we were going through this process was one of the reasons that we had such a high personnel ratio in support staff to other districts that we were identifying as peers was because of the requirements that our IEPs had on individual intervention or or, that's probably not the right word, individual, um, assignment of aides to a single student. And we had kind of had some philosophical discussions, but we didn't turn that into action necessarily around how we wanted to move away from that. Is that where you guys see things moving? Is is that is that practice reflected in this or are these support staff from other areas?
Yeah, I I don't, I'm not sure that a single one of these positions is reflective of a change in any kind of special education um, aid support. So we didn't, you know, as part of this, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Harris, but I believe the vast majority or, uh, Dr. Holler, the vast majority of these positions were were not related to special education. And I don't know that any of them, if if they were, were the change of a one-on-one aid to some other kind of support.
Some of them, some of them were special education students or special education aides. Uh, but the majority of them were regular education aides, uh, classroom aides, instructional aides.
Okay. So are are the ones that are associated with special education changes? Are those changes, um, happening in 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 tandem with changes in student IEPs? Are we moving in that direction?
So some of the aides that were special education aides, uh, that decided to re, that decided to resign, um, or move on, uh, were not necessarily one-to-one aides. And so we were able to shift other aides around to fill fill those needs. So they were acting more as as classroom support for students, for small group instruction and and filling other other needs that students had, but they weren't necessarily one-to-one aides.
So I think one of the things that's important, um, Mr. Aaron's, to to just recognize is that whether or not a student needs a one-to-one aide and the extent to which they need different supports, you know, is dictated by their IEP and their IEP team. So it wouldn't be something that we would do wholesale as part of a budgetary process. And, you know, the the number of regular education aides that we had, um, you know, sometimes allowed us to move people around within that. But again, as as Dr. Holler said, primarily, although they had, they were titled as special education, they were being used as whole classroom, uh, supports, not as individual student supports as per their IEPs.
And could you guys speak to the makeup of that, uh, that those thirty-eight positions? Were they primarily the part-time positions or the full-time? Because I I think that the, if I recall correctly, the most shocking number was that we had, if I, and I'm doing this off memory, so forgive me. I think we had over sixty-five full-time, uh, support staff personnel in an aide position or something related to that, and that was very much different from any of those peer districts. I think that was probably the most significant change. And I don't even, I think, if I recall correctly, uh, Reading School District didn't even have as many full-time professionals as we did.
I think that the majority of the, uh, people, the the positions that weren't filled through attrition were part-time. I think you can see that in the difference in the salaries and benefits column. I don't know, Dr. Holler, if you have specific numbers around that.
Um, not off the top of my head, but you're correct, Dr. Minor, that the majority of the positions were the part-time instructional aid positions, and they were a three, four-hour aides. Some of them were also cafeteria aides, uh, but, like I said, there there were some special ed aides, some of them part-time. We had very few. The majority of our full-time positions are special education aides.
Uh, Hunter, I can add a little bit to that. Teachers, we have, uh, three hundred and eight teachers in this budget, uh, six of them are long-term subs. Uh, paraprofessionals, seventy-six, and miscellaneous aides, another thirty-five.
So that seventy-six pairs, is that, uh, full-time or is that a combination of both?
Uh, the pairs, I would say combination of both, but while I'm looking at my sheets, probably eighty percent or more is full-time. Kristy, am I right on that?
That's correct, Brian. The majority of the pairs are full-time, full-time aid positions.
Okay, so I think, um, and I I don't want to belabor the point because maybe we we're not at a position to kind of answer that question. But I think it's really important, I think for me, and I I would hope for some of my colleagues as well, to find out where our long-term thinking is about that one-to-one support. Because we had some philosophical discussions, uh, that I felt that were revealing for myself. Um, I'm no special ed a, uh, education expert by any means, um, but that was particularly identified as, uh, potentially a growth issue for students as well as one of the primary cost drivers that we have in that, uh, personnel area.
So again, I, you know, I just, I would just want to clarify that I think it can certainly be a growth area for students to, um, you know, titrate from, um, full-time, a one-to-one aide, you know, over time, to having less and less support as they, you know, prepare to be independent. But but philosophically, as a district, we can't drive budgets by the individual needs of students in their IP. We never know, you know, any given time, you know, when a student is going to move in or come to us through EI that that requires those supports. So I think it's really important that, you know, we say, you know, publicly as a board, as superintendent, as administrative team, that the needs of individual students will drive, um, the level of support that they get, you know, as determined by their IEP team through their IEP. What you're looking at in terms of this overall picture and the cost reduction is an analysis when positions came up, not simply just saying they were empty, therefore they will be filled again. And I think that is typically how school districts do things, you know, we do things. You know, we had them before and so we're going to keep them, but really with each individual opening that would come across my desk as a piece of paper from the HR department, an analysis of whether or not we could continue to provide an excellent level of service without refilling that position. And again, the result is nearly a half a million dollars in savings in this year's budget over last year's budget. Actually, can you go to the next slide, Mr. Calamita? So I think part of what you can see here and, and we're, we're going to emphasize it a couple of times. And this is going to actually, I think in the next slide be, be called out. Neither Mr. Fike nor I, in either of our careers prior, I don't know if any of you as board members can ever remember an occasion where an administrative team came to you with a budget where the expenditures was less than the expenditures in the budget of the previous year. We have never, in either of our careers, seen that we couldn't find a district budget where a year-over-year came in as a cut. And, you know, in this case, a cut of a half a million dollars. In something that, you know, I think we are really proud of as an administrative team. We, you know, as Mr. Fike referenced, when he and I were hired, we knew that one of the goals of the school board in their governance role was to have an outstanding school district that ran in a more financially efficient manner. And we knew that one of the ways that we were going to needed to get after that was to look, you know, and again, in that focus area, the efficient organizational structures. So I think that that, to see a budget that in the year-over-year is actually representative of a cut is extremely unusual. But I'll let Mr. Fike kind of walk through the three, or I can actually, the three parts of this. So really what we're, we're proposing and, and this is kind of like the totality of the package. And these are like the three levers, right? In order for the district to take its structural deficit, which again was, you know, proposed to both of us as a priority during our hiring, from over three million dollars to about one point six, and approximately cutting the structural deficit in half, we have brought to the table, to the school board, to the community, a budget this year and expenditures that represents a budget that is four hundred fifty, four hundred fifty thousand dollars less than the current year budget. You know, so we're not going to come back, you know, three weeks from now and six weeks with additional cuts, you know. Sometimes that's a strategy that you see in school districts. It may have been a strategy that was here every time the board got a number, it was less than the number before. This is the actual number. This is the number that, that I, as your superintendent, that Brian, as your business administrator, are, are committed to. We were able to find cuts that represent a budget that is less than the budget that was put on the table last year by a half a million dollars. So we're not going to keep coming back to you with additional cuts. We feel like we have made all of the cuts that we can responsibly make. The one point nine percent tax increase, which we shared, you know, to the average Exeter homeowner, represents five dollars and seventy-five cents a month and increased taxes would generate eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. And then using the fund balance, which was designated to offset future deficits, using approximately a third, a little bit more than a third of that, not the entirety of it, so that we can be strategic over the course of three years. Using those three levers, we can cut the structural deficit in half and we believe operate the districts at a high level of efficiency and, and continuing excellence. The expenditures is really on the administrative team to bring forth. And we've done that. The governance pieces for the board to consider are the tax increase and the use of fund balance and the extent to which you're willing to pull those levers in the interest of eventually, hopefully eliminating that structural deficit and at least cutting it in half for the next school year. If you go to the next slide, there's another representation of that. And again, you can see, you know, over to the far left, that expenses have been cut year-over-year. We believe for the first time maybe ever in district history, but at least in recent district history, we're unable to find another occasion where that had occurred. And, you know, now the two choices in terms of balancing the scales from a governance standpoint is, you know, if you accept our proposal of a one point nine percent tax increase and the use of fund balance as Mr. Fike had described, we can get to that structural deficit being cut in half. If you choose to have a lower tax increase, then there would need to be a greater use of fund balance to get to that number relative to the deficit. If you chose to use a higher percentage of the fund balance, that would result in fewer days of emergency operational expenses on hand. If you use them from the unassigned portion. And ultimately, we believe a risk to the financial health of the district long-term, or you could choose to not lower the structural deficit by as much as we're recommending that we lower the structural deficit. So there, there are some different options in terms of the choices that the board will want to make moving forward between now and really the end of June, which is when the final board vote will take place. If we can look at the next slide. Again, we just wanted to end, you know, with our goals. We do think that this budget in its totality gets after organizational capacity and alignment. It, we think addresses governance and board relations to the extent that we felt like we were given very clear governance guidelines by the board through our hiring process and continuing with a desire to get our budgets under control and ultimately eliminate the structural deficit, to be fiscally responsible and continue to look at our operations as a whole, the condition of our facilities, et cetera. Again, we think part of community and public relations is, is presenting a budget that's transparent and hopefully easy for the community to understand. And then finally, without sacrificing student achievement and in fact, ultimately setting us up for the achievement of those hundred, hundred, hundred. So I believe that's the last slide in our presentation. Mr. Calamita, is that the last slide? Mr. Fike, is that the last slide?
That's the last slide.
So that concludes our preliminary budget presentation.
Well, I want to open it up to my, my other colleagues here quick. I do want to just say on, on behalf of myself, I'm, you know, I feel like this budget is definitely a step in the direction we want to be moving. And this is consistent with the conversations Dr. Minor that you and I had, Mr. Fike that you and I had, and that I've been, hopefully, I, I, I felt like I've been trying to hammer at some of this. I, I hope that maybe that doesn't, that doesn't sound too annoying at this point. I think personally, I would have hoped that we were moving faster. But you know, I, I have a lot of trust in this team and I don't want to, I'm, I'm gonna have to digest through some of this. So I appreciate you guys' work on this and I, I do feel like this is a good step in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you.
I know we will have this, oops, we will have this posted on our website, the video from tonight, but we also post this slideshow so that people could look through it.
We can.
I think we should do that to our website as well. One thing like, and I think you clarified a couple of things, that the federal grants discussion is COVID money. And we are not, that is not included in the budget. So that's one thing that's really important for us to remember. And also, in, in prior years, I feel like we kind of got this presentation multiple times and it was, there was always something changing, the numbers were changing. And if I'm understanding you correctly, this, these are the numbers you're giving us tonight. They're not going to change.
That's correct.
Allison, I, I looked at all the, all the budget presentations and it seemed like the first half of their presentation was what changed from their previous. And I asked Dr. Minor to let me get a complete handle on this and verify everything and you know, to pull the bills and look at everything and understand exactly where it was before I presented. And that's what we presented tonight.
I would say the only potential that I could see for any change, and I don't think it would be significant, is there is the column where Brian talks about the end of this fiscal year, his projected expenditures. You know, so that, you know, it is projected. I mean, I think he's made a very, very educated guess on where we'll be in June. It's not that far off at this point. But I, I think that's the only place where there would be any variance. It would be, there would be something unexpected. Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, that is.
I'm ninety-eight percent sure of that projection. So, you know, whatever it's changes is, is not going to be major. You know, the other thing I didn't mention in this, we also still have four buses and, and basically the regular capital expenditures that we were going to spend, you know, for the laptop replenishment, you know, to keep the one-to-one initiative. Nothing's been changed on those. It's, it's really, you know, where we're putting our resources. The only increase line was the purchase services and that was really due to the increase in charter school costs. The decrease line on professional services is because we were putting things in-house and special ed instead of paying out for them. You know, I think that was a million-dollar price tag. We still have the a five hundred thousand dollar decrease, but all that went into salaries and other portions. So that's why you still had a, a five hundred thousand dollar decrease instead of a million-dollar decrease. Because I think when Paul went through it, she still had purchasing professional service left in there. You know, outside of the, the contract.
Okay. And that, that structural deficit slide, in past years, we've, that number has always been going up into the, to the fact that at some point we were like, we are going to run out of money. We are going to run out of money. So, and, you know, wouldn't have any extra left. So this is the first time in a number of years that I'm seeing that we are, we cut that number in half and the plan is to, to keep it that way. Is that correct? That keep going down?
Yeah, and we, we've already started work on the following year, you know, this early retirement buyout for the teachers is not going to affect us in this budget. But the following year, that's the three hundred thousand dollar savings. So we, we are looking down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, how did you guys include the building leaders and the department heads in the process?
Everyone sent me their budget request back in December. Basically, when I sent it out, I asked for real numbers, not what they wanted, what they had to have. But, you know, they had to justify anything that was over the, the previous year. Really didn't have any problems with that. Dr. Almater reviewed things with the, the department head, so there, there's nothing that they didn't ask for that we really turned down. There's a lot of wants that I didn't include any fluff, if you want to call it that. But, you know, there, there's, we had, we had a lot of deferred maintenance that needed to be taken care of, I'll tell you that.
Maybe Dr. Flam, you know, I'm doing this as a building principal, maybe you could describe your experience in terms of what you were asked to provide for the budget.
Yeah, absolutely. As Mr. Fike said, he reached out to us, he asked for our real numbers. And we reached out to our department heads and those who help us to create the budget. We forwarded that information to Mr. Fike for his review and Dr. Minor's review. And you know, that, that's essentially the process. You know, so our department heads and those involved with the budgeting process gave us their information. You know, we spoke with them about what was entered and then forwarded that to Mr. Fike.
Thanks. So I, I unfortunately lost you guys for a bit, but you were talking about the reduction in the first time in history presenting a budget that was a lower budget than the previous year. So, so, I mean, often our budgets, we approve our budgets and end up having a million, million and a half overrun. You know, we, we sort of overshoot the budget. So was this based on actual costs or based on actual, the budget from the previous year?
I, I based my budgeting on actual costs. I, I went through bills, I went through history. You know, I needed to feel comfortable with what I was presenting.
But are you saying that the budget this year is lower than, you presented a budget that was lower than cost this year or lower than last year's budget?
Lower than expenses for last year.
Okay, for this, I'm sorry, for the year we're in now?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, the reason you're not going to use a full deficit you expected is because you're, you budgeted roughly six hundred thousand less than revenues. Because you took a two percent decrease in real estate collections, but that didn't change at all. Plus you took a large decrease in real estate transfer tax and that actually increased. I think you took a five or six percent decrease in, or an income tax and you're less than, it's like a point oh four percent change. And that might change in the, the second quarter, which is our fourth quarter, you know. That might even increase because I'm hearing from other districts that their employment numbers have gone up. So we'll, we'll see.
Thanks. And the federal money again, where, where is, how much net-net federal money did we get through COVID? And how has that been? How has that been spent or where is that housed or what can that be spent on?
Well, the, the first two COVIDs, there, we actually had two of them. One was through the county and one was through, we call ESSER one. And that was really spent on new materials, books, your new curriculum, I think you, Dr. Minor, you can correct me, your new curriculum.
Right, so, so the, the usable funds, you, you might remember this, Mr. Dupina, I mean, this was presented to the board back, I think in January, when we first got that round of ESSER funds. There was a certain percentage of it that were used for things like plexiglass and hand sanitizer, cleaning supplies, those sorts of things. But then we were also allowable uses were, were to really like stave off learning loss. And so we did at that point, early in the year, when there was no sign that there would be any additional COVID money, invest in resources, literacy resources, those sorts of things. So in terms of the, you know, the, the net-net in terms of expenses and income relative to future ESSER funds, an example would be, you know, the summer camp program that we are looking to run this summer to make up for student learning loss. So that's something that we wouldn't normally have in a school budget. You know, we wouldn't be proposing to the district had it not been for COVID. But it will be paid for entirely out of COVID relief funds. So again, you know, everybody, everybody at every level, from the state, from PSBA, from Pasbo to Passa to, again, the legislature has been really clear that the school district should all be marking that as in and out money. That's used exclusively for things that are COVID-related and not to offset anything that would be a multi-year budgetary expense. So for instance, not to hire teachers with that because once that money is gone, that money is gone and there will be no money to make up for it. So those were the kinds of expenditures. And again, they were, they were regular offset. Not part of the budget.
And the county money?
Brian, I'm not sure which portion of the county money went. I think that was a lot of PPE.
A lot of PP, some I think part of the county money went to the distant learning software.
COVID-related virtual learning.
Correct.
And I didn't see that breakdown in the budget, but it very well may have because I lost you guys for about twenty minutes. Is there any money designated either from COVID funds or anything in the budget that would require us if we come back in August or September, you know, with a virtual option? I mean, do we have? You know, we have additional expenses to operate the school because we might be, you know, in a, in a hybrid scenario again?
Well, the ESSER two, we should probably have accrual that maybe by end of June. And that's what we're planning to use for our summer. But there's also ESSER three, which is the, the one they just, the two trillion they just passed. That money, as long, ESSER two, you can spend up through twenty twenty-three, ESSER three, you can spend up through twenty twenty-four. So that can always be used for PPE. You know, you have to use a minimum of twenty percent for learning loss.
But we could also, we could also use it for third-party providers or, you know, to hire some kind of subcontractors or temporary teachers, something along those lines, pay our own teachers to do virtual programming if we needed to do that above and beyond what we were offering as part of our regular school program. So part of, you know, what Mr. Fike is saying is that, that money hasn't been distributed or allotted and won't be till after the budget process ends, but that will be something that we will, because we won't, we wouldn't even. Because we won't, we wouldn't even be able to spend it if we wanted to before the start of the school year, we'll have access to, should we need to spend it on. Any kind of virtual learning or unforeseen, um, P P E type expenses.
Thanks.
Yeah, one thing to note, the, uh. I, I was legislative call. You know, they're, they're pushing, do not use it for operational. In fact, there's a caveat in the, the grant. That you're not allowed to lower taxes during the time you're receiving this money. So it's, I, I guess they're making sure no one's using it to offset operational costs.
Well, that sounds like a court piece in the making.
It sounds like our community would fall over on their face if they heard that anyway.
Right.
I don't even, that doesn't sound constitutional, but never mind. Sorry.
Brian, I have a question.
Sure.
In, in regard to the charter school. Uh, students, we, we had about a forty, from my calculation, about a forty-five, forty-six percent increase. In charter school students that was directly related to. Uh, students who were leaving because of the COVID, because of the pandemic. Um, and that resulted in about a half a million dollar. Increase.
Correct.
In overall costs. Um, and I, I think what you're saying and what I'm hearing is that you're. You're, you're sort of assuming that all those thirty-three or so additional students of those, uh. I think we have currently enrolled about a hundred and five. Um, students in charter, cyber charter. Those additional thirty-three students are all going to stay there, which I, I think. Maybe a, um. I'm not sure whether I would necessarily agree that that's going to be the case. But I guess my question is, I mean. That's a big, that's probably the biggest increase in our line item, any line item of our, of our district we can think about. You know, those costs, and even though we're saving 450,000, we're spending half a million dollars more. On, on these charter school kids. Um, two things, you know, one is the possible return of some of these students which may have. You know, corresponding impact upon our overall costs. The other is the proposals that are on the table right now, the governor's budget. Which is one thing, uh, as well as, uh, some, uh, potential legislation that's going around right now in terms of charter school funding reform. Which could potentially save the school districts a significant amount of money. Uh, and I'm wondering whether we could track some of this stuff a little bit. And I know you don't want to make any modifications to the budget, but. The, I mean, this could have some fairly sign, I mean, if the governor's proposal went through. If charter school reform should happen to go through, which is probably somewhat unlikely considering things in Harrisburg. Um, it could have a real impact upon, you know, our overall costs. So is there any way we can continue to track that and? And is there any possibility that, you know, of some of these, our total, uh, expensive expenditures could be reduced? To some degree in the event that we see some change in any of these variables.
Yeah, they, uh, well, as today I was on a Pasbo legislative call. And they don't see charters or charter school reform going through, but there is some traction among the, the state. Representatives of possibly setting a flat rate for cyber charter school. Which would be a help, it wouldn't be a great help, but it would be a help and probably reduce our costs by ten or fifteen percent.
Well, ours are all cyber chartered, right? I mean, I don't think we have very many charter school students.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's, it's. It's better than nothing. Uh, they were talking maybe ninety-five hundred to, uh. You know, ten, ten thousand, five hundred, we're at what, fourteen, five? So yeah, forty kids times, you know.
But, and also the tier.
Now, every dollar I take.
And the tiered, the tiered, uh, system for special education, you know, I mean, considering the level of services being. Adjusted based upon, you know, the actual level of need that the student has.
I, I, that would be great, but I think that's could be years down the road because they're going to have to come out with some type of. Verification, um, you know, from what we've had in the past, you can, you can't verify what the charter is actually doing. Yeah, which is another, another problem. Um, you know, and talking about, I'd love to see kids come back, but schools that came back after the first quarter full-time. Didn't see any kids come back. Uh, the charters have a, a great. PR campaign out there and once they're in, they never leave. You know, and some of the, some of these schools even mentioned that, you know, the charters are telling them, hey, we've been doing it for twenty years. Your school's only been doing it for a year. Stay with us, you know, if you're going to stay virtual.
Well, I think it'll be interesting to see just what happens. I mean, as this kid's re, as kids enroll next school year, you know, it'll be interesting to see. What those, how those numbers, um, um, if they flex at all.
Right.
And, and also I'd love to see the governor's proposal go through, you know. His budget proposal and, you know, that's a little bit of legislative advocacy that we could, you know, try to. Do, and I know we've tried to do that, you know, we've met, you know, through PSBA, we've tried. To, um, influence the legislators and they're, I think some are receptive, you know, um. So, um, you know, hopefully, hopefully, I think there's more traction now than there's ever been. Related to charter school reform because it's simply out of control. I mean, the, the costs are ridiculous for cyber charter. Um, and the, the formula is just completely irrational.
Yeah, and, and across the state, if they were between forty and fifty percent increase this year.
Yeah, well, that's, ours was forty-six, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay.
Hey, Brian, did you, I'm sorry, again, I was off for a bit. Did the budget for next year include anything with the bus facility?
Uh, it well included four buses. Uh, I did not have the. Anything with, you know, uh, renovations on that because we still have a lot of money sitting in our capital. And that'll be the next budget we'll be presenting as capital food service.
Okay, so, so that, is that money, um, basically in unassigned fund balance at this point then?
No, it's, it's in the capital improvement fund. It's a totally separate fund. What we're talking today is strictly general funds.
So your general operating fund?
Right. And then I'll be presenting a, a capital improvement fund, which is where you have the money you had from the. The previous bond issue and this additional three million. Um, and I think there was some money just sitting there for. Projects that, uh, we haven't even started yet, like sidewalk and Hunter and I were talking about that at the last meeting. Uh, we have to come up with list and get the board to approve what we want to actually spend that on. Uh, you've had a capital improvement running, uh, spreadsheet. Uh, what I've asked, uh, the principals to get back to me is you tell me what you actually need instead of us deciding what we think you need. And, uh, Hunter and I, and. Dr. Hember, we need to sit down and present to the board, this is what we think you should spend, you know, capital this year. And can we go out to bid and, and start working on that this summer and same thing for the following year. You know.
But we're reserved for.
We're reserved, yeah, it's reserved strictly for capital. You have money there for.
So Brian, you're saying that there's, if we would do a bus. Got garage renovation, that would be less than $2 million. We would already have the money there. It's already funded.
You, you have roughly $5 million right now in a capital fund. You just put additional three million in from this last bond issue.
Okay.
With, with things on a list that, you know, I, I think we need to really sit down on that list and say. Yeah, this is important. Uh, you know, one of the things on that list was to do the junior high. Heating system this year, but you, you're not going to be able to do that this year, you know. We, we barely got through the two elementaries last year. If we're going to do the junior high, we need to set that over a two-year period and. And time it because you cannot afford not to be able to open school in the fall and. You know, when you do a heating system, you basically have to do it in the summer once.
So will we see the capital budget in May then?
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at my schedule, I think at the end of April.
So that would be a separate meeting or how?
I'll do a separate meeting. Hunter, I and Dr. Hember, we have to get together on facilities. And determine what we want to present. You know, after I get, give them the feedback from the, the buildings and I, I've gone through a lot of the buildings and there's a lot of things I'd like to move around on those lists. You know, um, you know, Renee's on the phone here, she'd probably jump up and down, but. I have classrooms at Jackson Wall that we have carpet tiles that keep on falling. Out, so they turn them upside down so it's not tripping hazard. You know, for $22,000, you could probably do a classroom, but I think all those classrooms just need new floors. You know, I'd like to, to move that up in the capital list. And there's other things that I think. We, we have to prioritize, I think that, uh, what we're talking about presenting to the board.
Does anybody else have any questions before I move on?
Yeah, I, uh, I don't even know if it's a question, uh. But, but last year we had with, with mixed, mixed success. A series of so-called budget meetings, public meetings. I think we started with a plan for six. Uh, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, I think we ended up with four. And I think the last two, all of three people showed up. I pitched the idea of doing a debrief to see if. We could. Uh, fix what was broken about those and the idea was not, uh, not well received. So now we're a year on, um. Is anybody thinking about doing those again?
Well, I think just for my perspective and what I shared with Brian and Kim when we had talked about budget last year, um, in some of our. Meetings is that there was a great amount of utility in those looking at a deeper level. Uh, probably longer than three years, probably more like five years. And that was some of the stuff that I was alluding to with the I E P changes. So I'm not sure that that's a process that we'd want to do on a yearly basis because there's a lot of energy involved with doing those things. If that's something that the board wants to move in the direction in, um, I certainly will be one of the people that go to those meetings. Um, but I think that was some of the reasoning for why we hadn't done that again. And then of course. You know, COVID presented some challenges with that and how we were going to do that. Um, but I, I appreciate that thought, um, John, um. You know, I, I wonder if, if you felt like there was. Particular, um, value that you got out of it that maybe we can try and do in the future, uh, if you want to share that with me. And I can forward that to Kim and Brian, or I guess you could probably just send that to Kim and Brian instead.
And I also, I do feel that, um, Dr. Dr. Um, Winters, before he left, he did speak with Dr. Miner about some of the things that did come up in those meetings. Um, and I believe they had conversations and included. Those discussions in their decisions that they made.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I see there, there's nothing on the calendar, so I'm, I'm assuming we're not going to do them again.
There's none planned for this, this budget cycle now.
Well, as I say, the, the last, I think six people showed up, the same six people showed up. The last two meetings and, and it, to me, that doesn't spell success. Uh, maybe the first two or three were, were worthwhile, but. Three people show up to two, two successive meetings. Uh, as a former PR guy, that, that does not scream success to me. So I'm just as happy not to have, not to have scheduled them.
Well, you know, one thing that I just think is interesting and. You know, this is just food for thought, um, not advocating for this at this point. But one thing that Governor Mifflin does is they have an annual, um, budget meeting. And when I was, uh, part of the Governor Mifflin community in my previous job, they usually had about fifty people who would attend on a. On a yearly basis, if I recall correctly. Um, and I think one of the things that's just really hard for people is attending. Multiple meetings on a very similar topic. And I just think that if we think about the times. Where there's been a lot of residents who have come out to meetings, it's not usually for the same topic repeated night overnight, overnight. Um, so maybe that's just some food for thought as we think about how we can engage better in the future.
I think that would be a good idea, one or two meetings, not, not six.
Hunter, can I just say something before we move on? I forgot to say this at the beginning of the meeting, but if you're listening now and you would like to make any. Public comment about anything that we're discussing tonight, um, you can do so by sending an email to questions@myxer.org for instructions on how to. Join this meeting. I'm sorry, I forgot that. So, um, but if anything about the budget or, um. The, any of the presentations tonight, please go ahead and send that email. Okay, are we moving on, Hunter?
Yes.
Okay.
Brian, do you want to, uh, run through the B C T C operating budget quickly for us?
Sure, oh, well, it's pretty well. Let me pull up here. Pretty much not much of an increase, uh, our share for twenty-one, twenty-two will be a hundred eighty-three, oh ninety. Let me pull it up on the. If you go through, um, find it here. Page. Page ten basically shows everyone's share. Page eleven shows the members' maximum contribution for next year. Which is a hundred, one million, fifty-three thousand, seven oh six, and that's basically. On the technology center and then there's also on their debt service, which, uh, our share is. Uh, ninety. Seven, eight, six, forty-three.
Brian, do you know what the total number for our increase is?
Uh, I can pull up, I have it on my budget.
I think a, a ballpark within a, a thousand would work as well. I don't know if that makes it easier or not.
Uh, we're at a thousand eighty-five, it was a thousand fifty-three, so thirty-two thousand. From last year.
John, I'm not sure if you want to speak at all to, um, the, the, the value of B C T C. Um, but I know that I think we all feel that there is a great value, but I know that's. Your liaison, I think, I, I don't know if that's the right way to express that. Um, but I'm not sure if you wanted to just pitch in quick and just advocate for that at all.
Well, I, you know, I've just been to three meetings, um, as the new liaison, but. I, I, it's, it's hard to put a dollar figure on the value to, to our students, uh, who. I mean, they're, they're pretty much, uh, scoping out their futures, uh, some of them at B C T C. And so, um. Uh, I think the value is, is, I would say incalculable to, to the futures for these kids.
I, I would certainly agree and I, I can recall even when I was in high school. Um, as much as it kind of pains me to repeat, uh, many of the students who would go to B C T C would look at that as. The best part of their day, um, because it was the part where they were most engaged and they felt like they could be the best. You know. Part of, of themselves at that point because they felt like they were doing something that was, um. Direct return on, on the, uh, investment of time that they were making.
Yeah, absolutely. Sometimes more so, I mean, I look back to some of the math courses I took at Exeter that were, they certainly were, they, they helped me to think. Uh, you know, do I sit around to do, uh, you know, geometric, uh, calculations now? Of course not, but. The, the work that they do, uh, day in and day out. Again, I think is, uh, is invaluable. I should also point out that I have only attended, um. Virtually, I plan in, uh, in this month to resume, uh, in-person. Uh, coverage, uh, and I think that will, that will help me to appreciate even more, uh, the value of, of. Uh, of, of that kind of education. I'm also looking forward to getting the, uh, the dinner prepared by the students, so, uh, that's, uh. I'll see it firsthand.
Well, with that humble little brag, I think we'll move on, unless anybody else.
I have a real quick question.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Um, and this is real quick. Um, there is a $97,000 cost for Exeter for special education students. Is that included in the overall district share, Brian?
Oh, that's on top of the one, that's why the, the, uh, amount. We had, uh, ninety-seven thousands for special education and the yellow was a hundred, what, one oh? Previous page, please. The one oh five three, so yeah, those two together is where I came up with the.
Okay, okay.
Resolution. Now, that special education, you know. It, it depends, I don't, really not sure what our district does with that. Uh, the previous district has had, actually had, uh, programs for ninth graders to go over. And, you know, they, they tried out each different section for two weeks. And that was, that's what this special needs was. So I don't know if we have that here or not, uh, this might strictly be special education, I'm not sure.
That's their early admissions program, Mr. Fike, that's available to all districts.
So that's, that's what this is, the early admissions then?
I'm not sure if that's what this total covers in some, but I'm saying that the program that you're referencing.
Right.
The early admissions.
The previous district, all these, this amount totaled their early admissions, but, yeah.
Dawn, Dawn, the, um, the, the, the eight or nine students that we have there in special education, are they full-time students there? Um, is that part of the cost?
I'm not sure, but I.
I'm not sure, but I can get that information for you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, um, moving on to, I believe the first one is the LERTA, and I know that we have somebody who wanted to make a public comment for that, so we can bring, um, I think it's Jeff Bukowski forward, and then we'll jump into our discussion when, um, he's moved back into the attender phase.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me, I'm not sure if you can see me, I'm not, uh, uh, I think maybe I can put on my, uh, my camera, but I'm not sure if it allows me to do that, so.
I can confirm that we can hear you though.
Okay, great. Thanks for, uh, having me here tonight, and I wanted to, uh, you know, thank the entire board and administration for all the hard work you do. I, I know public service of the type you do on the school board is not always appreciated as much as it should be by the community. And I just want to thank everybody for all your hard work and all the time and effort, uh, you spend, uh, working on things for, for the, the school district. Uh, my interest here tonight is, a- as many of you know, I was the, I was an elected, uh, township supervisor for six years, and I served for two years as the chair of the Township Board of Supervisors. And during that period of time, one of the uh, programs we worked on, uh, for economic development was the adoption of, of uh, township-wide, uh, LERTA. And, uh, we did that at the urging of the county commissioners, uh, because the county had adopted a countywide LERTA, uh, in the middle of twenty fifteen, and shortly on the heels of that, we took that subject up uh, at the township and held, uh, public meetings and adopted on behalf of the township. Uh, I'll call it a township-wide LERTA. It, it covers commercial, you know, non-residential properties and a LERTA is, for those of you who, who don't know, are, you know, is a tax abatement program for economic revitalization. And the way the county program works and the program that the township adopted works is it's a flat-line, ten-year, uh, tax abatement for the improved, uh, assessed value of non-residential properties, commercial, industrial, uh, properties that are improved by owners. And their assessed value goes up and for a period of ten years, they are given a, a reduction of the amount of taxes they're owed that are owed to the taxing authorities on the improved assessed value. They would continue to pay their, their full tax on the pre-existing assessed value, but it's a break that, that phases in the full tax on the increased assessed value. And the reason we adopted that and that I urged the school district to adopt a LERTA is to incentivize property owners to improve commercial properties, uh, to the betterment of the community, the economic uh, development of the community and the tax base. Uh, and we actually, in twenty fifteen, we had communicated with the school board and you'll see in your, uh, agenda attachments, uh, includes any, uh, a letter that, uh, then school board president Quiner sent to me as chair of the, uh, Board of Supervisors, supporting uh, our LERTA and stating that, uh, the school district intended to adopt a LERTA itself. My understanding is that the school district never got around to formally adopting the LERTA. And that's part of why it's on your agenda now, to consider and hopefully approve that LERTA. The other item in, in your package for tonight's meeting is the ordinance that the township adopted. And uh, it, it, it serves as a model, uh, for what the school district could adopt. Obviously, the school district is not in the business of, you know, land use decisions, and I think it would make sense for the school district to adopt a, a LERTA that went district-wide. Obviously, that covers not just Exeter Township, but also the, the borough of St. Lawrence, so I, I don't know what, uh, their stance is on a LERTA. I, I do know that, uh, property owners who are considering developing their properties, improving their properties, look at LERTAs as a very positive incentive. And therefore, uh, rather than being a tax giveaway as a LERTA is often perceived, it, it's an extra incentive for property owners to improve their properties, uh, improve the community. You know, for example, by adding a restaurant to an older, uh, maybe, uh, dilapidated or rundown building that, that, you know, has been sitting there. I can think of properties along our main corridor that uh, I'm sure you can too. Uh, a LERTA would incentivize property owners or investors to buy property and improve them. It would help, help make those decisions uh, to, to make improvements a little easier and get them a quicker return on their investment. And at the same time, improve the community with really no out-of-pocket loss to the existing tax revenues of any of the taxing authorities. Obviously, the school district has quite, uh, you know, is among the taxing authorities is, is the largest, uh, tax bill that, uh, a property owner gets, so having the school district adopt a LERTA would, uh, be a big incentive and, and go a long way toward, you know, promoting economic development in the community. Uh, I, I suggest that a, a ten-year, you know, flat phase in, so the way that works is in year one, there, there's, I can't remember, it's year one, it's zero percent, and year two, it's ten percent of the improved value is, uh, is paid. It looks like, um, it's ten percent, uh, a hundred percent's forgiven in the first year, and then the tenth year, it's ten percent's forgiven. And then in year eleven, the full assessed value uh, is paid. Uh, I, I suggest adopting the ten-year flat line approach because that's, A, what the county and township have, and therefore, uh, would be easier for property owners to administer and, and, and follow along with because they'd have the same program across taxing authorities. And B, I think it also provides, uh, you know, obviously a little bit more of a, of a tax break, uh, over ten years versus seven with you know, little loss of that additional revenue to the school district. That's all I really have. I just, uh, and I'm happy to answer any questions if any board members or, uh, administrators have questions about the communications, uh, since those are in the packet. Happy to answer, uh, those or any questions, uh, that anybody may have. But I fully support uh, the school district's adoption of a LERTA. And, uh, and I'm happy to keep supporting that, uh, at the voting meeting or provide any other information that, uh, you, any of the board members may need, uh, in making a decision. Thank you very much.
I, I have a question, this is Brian Fike. What type of, uh, requirements do you have for job creation in, in the township LERTA?
There is not a strict, uh, job creation, uh, requirement. It, the, the LERTA is based on uh, the type of property and, and it was, I called it township-wide, and I'm glad you gave me a chance to clarify that piece too. They, they, and, and the language was a little, um, we, we had some discussion at the time, we, we declared deteriorated areas, and some people didn't like us using that, uh, term. And there is a township map that shows those areas, which is essentially most of the areas that are zoned for commercial, industrial, and, uh, similar uses, uh, retail uses. Um, but to your question, th- there is no strict, uh, job creation, uh, criteria. It's based on and, you know, a non-residential use in the appropriate zone, uh, that is improved and, uh, and therefore, uh, gets a, an increased assessment based on the improvements to the property. And just to follow up on that, so once it's adopted, the way, with, the way the county adopted it and we followed suit at the township was to make it a blanket pre-approval if you fit into those zones so that you didn't have individual property owners applying on a, uh, property-by-property basis for approval of their abatement and, which gets into all kinds of, uh, issues, political and otherwise, that you know, that one property owner or one type of use might be favored over others and, and invites, you know, pressure against certain, you know, property uses or owners. And, and we, we felt, and the county felt, and I still feel strongly, that the, the blanket uh, LERTA that, that covers the approved uses in the approved areas is, is the way to go.
Two thousand fifteen, it seems like the school board was interested in participating, but you said that we didn't move forward with it. Can you explain that?
Yeah, I'm not, uh, my, I, I was surprised when I saw, you know, found that this was coming up on the agenda, that there hadn't been a formal resolution, uh, adopting the LERTA. I, I think it was the inten- intention to have, have done so at the time. Uh, based on the letter from Mr. Quiner to me, and that's how I understood that. I, I just, and I'm not sure wha- what happened on, on the school district. And I, I, I'm not aware of a, a follow-up discussion on which it was, uh, but, you know, brought up and rejected, or I, I just think it might have been uh, an administrative oversight, and I'm not sure there've been many, if any, you know, applicants in, in the period of time that have, that would have taken advantage of it. Uh, but I do know that as we were doing economic development and, and the, the township master plan toward the end of my term, um, w- we had a lot of inquiries from property owners or potential property owners or investors in, in a LERTA as an incentive. So I, I'm not sure, and I'm not trying to, uh, cast any aspersions. I don't think there was any, you know, intent, intentional decision not, not to, um, take the next step. It, it may have just been, uh, you know, I, I, I know on our our end at the township, I, I had assumed, and you know what they say about that, um, that it, that it had been formalized. Uh, and, you know, I don't think this board is necessarily bound by that, uh, although I, I suppose someone could, could make that argument, but if the, uh, if it hadn't been formalized, I, I think it's up to the, the current board to, to make a decision on whether they want to adopt it.
And you may not be able to answer this, but would you happen to know if some businesses have taken advantage of, I'm sorry, not advantage of it, has fallen under this in our area? Um, because I, I see a lot of buildings that are not being used at the same time, seeing buildings being constructed on other properties. Do we feel it's been successful in our area?
Uh, I, I don't know the numbers. I do know that there are businesses that are in the process of, 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 in various stages of development who are try, and those owners are trying to take advantage of it now. I don't know the numbers um, over the past several years, uh, when I've been off the board. And, and so I, I can't answer that directly, but I do know it is, it is a big factor for business owners who, a- and I think, yeah, you're probably thinking of a lot of the same properties I think of when, you know, this, this would create an incentive perhaps for someone to take a look at a, you know, a property that had, hasn't been used um, for a number of years or, you know, needs refurbishment, uh, or you know, for someone to jump in and, and, you know, make those improvements. I, I just don't have the numbers on how many have, have done it though.
Okay, thank you. Um, Hunter, can you explain why this is being brought up right now? Is there a purpose?
Yeah, so I think some of the purpose is that some of those property owners are in the development phase with the Township Planning Commission, and I think there's also one at the zoning hearing board, and they inquired about it. Um, this was actually something that I had actually proposed to the, the board, or I had spoken to the board about in two thousand fifteen. Um, I hope it's not because of me that they didn't decide to do it, but, uh, um, at that point, the county commissioners had been advocating for all the school districts and municipalities to adopt this. So one of the reasons that I'm bringing this forward now on the agenda, and Brian and I talked about this somewhat as well, is this is a tool for economic development. And while the school district isn't immediately concerned with that, because that's not our function, as that's really the township's function, we wanted to have an all-of-community approach to really looking at some of the challenges we face with our tax rates especially. Uh, so that's really what my focus is in trying to adopt this. Um, and I can speak more to that, but that, that's really the purpose behind this.
I, I could speak on my behalf. Uh, I, I am not against a LERTA, but I'm against the blanket wide because the LERTA program is really to, to fix up properties or out of blight, not just to award or reward anyone for fixing their own property up. It was also to bring in, uh, employment, you know, so most exercises I've been at, did into a blanket wide, they took applications and did a case-by-case. Or they set certain areas that they knew, like the, uh, redevelopment authority owned a bunch of properties up in Schuylkill Valley, and they, they took each one of those, you know, based on, okay, you're, you're doing a minimum amount of improvement, I think it was five hundred thousand, and you're increasing employment by, I think it was either eight full-time or fifteen part-time. I think that was their, their criteria. Um, and there, I think three of them, they did a five years, and the others, they did a seven years. They didn't want to go out the full ten years. The five years was a twenty percent new tax kick in. I, I don't want to call it abatement because it's not a tax abatement. Uh, basically, the LERTA program works at, if your assessment right now is four hundred thousand, you're going to put another million dollars into that property. And when your property's done in three years and they reassess you at one point four billion, that additional million, uh, kicks in over, like, if it's five-year period, twenty percent a year through five years. The first year is zero, second year twenty, and then by the end of, but year, you're at a hundred percent valuation at that one point four. Uh, that's why I don't like the word abatement, because there's abatement programs out there that they don't pay any taxes until the end of the abatement term. Where here, there's, you know, no matter what, the first year, they're paying whatever their assessed value is, and they're be paying that up until the time it's reassessed. Most LERTAs, you know, if you approve it, um, it won't be reassessed until the construction is done, which could be three, four years down the road. And after that, then you're looking at the five-year, the seven-year, the ten-year payment plan to, to bring in the taxes. But that's something for the board to decide, that, you know, I'm a proponent of LERTA, it does work, but I think there to do a, uh, blanket, I'm against that, uh, because you need to know, you know, make sure you're it is helping, it's not just helping people to improve the property and not actually improve the township.
So if we were to go ahead and do this, we can make our own stipulations, or do we have to follow the same guidelines as the township?
It's up to each taxing authority to set their own stipulations.
Thank you.
There's some new ones.
I, I know it's easier to, to follow one else, but, you know. I, I know it's easier to, to follow one else, but, you know.
There's some nuances as well in how these would affect how a business would apply for them as well. And in this situation, the county-wide LERTA has a certain stipulation that if you adopt a map that's identical to the one that the Berks County Planning Commission used, talking, trying to identify some of those properties that Brian was referring to with dilapidation or blighted properties, that the county would automatically accept you without having to do additional applications or hearing processes around that. So there are some nuances in here, but I think to Brian's point largely, we have full control over what we would want to do. Because we are getting late in the evening, I'm not sure.
Hunter, I got a, I got a couple of questions I want to ask. I don't want to sort of rush through this yet. So I mean, I think just fundamentally, I mean, if, you know, if you're in a LERTA and you forego revenue, you're going to have to find a cut somewhere. I mean, that's potentially basically what you're doing is foregoing revenue. And again, you know, it's a, I know it's a longer-term perspective in economic development. I don't see as much coordinated economic development happening out of the township as we did maybe in prior years, but that could, you could simply be because I'm not paying attention. So I'd, I'd really want to understand, you know, what, what are the plans? And as Mr. Bukowski said, you know, if we have, it would be, it would be great to have a list of those companies that are contemplating the use of LERTA, because I think it would help us to develop a pro forma around the impact on our tax revenue. And just two other sort of statements, and maybe Brian can jump in here. I wonder where we are relative to our abatement with the Exeter Commons, because I believe that was a straight-up tax abatement, and I don't know if we've run course and if we're due to, you know, get back on the, have them get fully back on the rolls with us. And then secondly, let's remember that over the last couple of years, we've had a number of companies actually challenge their tax assessment and take away several hundred thousand dollars from the school district. So that, you know, there's always those kind of other things that can happen out there, you know, that have an impact on us as well. And I just think when we think about this, we got to think about it in total. And I would say just the final thing is when we look at LERTAs relative to a local community versus, uh, say, uh, a county government, I mean, remember the majority of the local community is, is, uh, local school board is, is locally funded with taxes versus the county is primarily state-funded, and so they have some, they have less sort of impact on them because their funding is coming more significantly from other sources ver, rather than local.
Okay, Mr. Uppino, I think Exeter Commons has run its course of my recollection of talking to Anne before she left. I'll double check on that. The other thing, when you said about reassessment, there's nothing stopping a person from going for reassessment, even if they're in a LERTA.
Right. No, I'm just saying we should be, I'm not saying that we would put something in an alerted to stop that, but I'm just saying that, you know, again, we have to sort of be mindful of all those potential things that happen that naturally take away revenue from the school district. And, you know, reassessment is one of those. Recently, Boskov's reassessed and pays less. Walmart reassessed and, you know, challenged their assessment and, and, or, and pays less. So again, I, I'm not, again, I don't want to, I, I just think I want, we, we need to take a macro view when we're thinking about what we're doing here. Cause LERTA in and of itself, at face value, I actually read Mannheim Township's LERTA today. They all, they intend very good things. It's the unintended consequences that you just want to, you know, risk manage for. That's all I'm saying.
I totally agree, Mike. Um, real quick, Michelle, I think you had a question as well.
Yeah. So I'm looking at the exemption, exemption schedule, and I'm wondering what would happen if a business takes advantage of this and then they sell it? Would that new owner get to, would they start over? Would they not be able to take advantage at all, or would they just fall into wherever they're at? If it's been three years, they're now at the fourth year?
I think the law, on the, the under, I think the statute for this speaks to that. And I believe that the LERTA is canceled when the property is sold. I believe that's the case. But we'll definitely get clarification on that as we, we look at this, because I think just based on some of the questions and comments that we're not ready to move this to an agenda at any point. And I wasn't expecting that we were going to it tonight anyways. Um, so.
I'm not sure if you can, you can hear me.
Yeah.
The one, the, the answer to Ms. Stratton's question i- is that under, I think under the county, I'm sure of the township one, because the ordinance specifically says it, and I have it in front of me. We, we specifically said it would not go away.
Oh, okay.
If the property were sold. But I, I think you may be right that you, you may have to specifically adopt that under the, uh, under the, uh, the statute. You may have to make a decision one way or another, but I'm not positive about that. The, the township one specifically says it does not go.
Yeah, I think you're right on that. You have to put it in your resolution. And then there's, there's always the, the one place says that, that it wasn't sold, it was transferred to the parent company, so that wasn't considered a sale.
Right. And, and you, and you, you want to be careful about that, because there's lots of reasons that someone might form an LLC to acquire a property, do the improvements, and then transfer it to another operating company or lease, you know, or something like that. So, yeah, that, for other business or tax reasons. So that, that's the reason we specifically did not want to have the LERTA go away, the benefit go away in a sale.
Did anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, uh, just a, a question here. Um, do we know how many other school districts have a resolution for LERTA? And if so, would it be helpful to talk to them to gather their experience?
I have a Berks County Business Managers Meeting Friday. I'll ask the question.
DCED, I think, might also be required to have a count. I, I think that they have some similar requirements for TIFs and, and LERTAs, that they be identified before DCED as well. I'm not sure where to find that, so maybe I'll poke around for it. With that, if there aren't any other questions, I think what we'll probably do is have that, have an additional discussion to follow up on this, maybe with some more details around what an actual proposal could look like. But for now, I think we should probably just move on to the first responder tax credit discussion. Does anybody else have any final questions for this? Okay. Thank you, Jeff, for, for coming this evening and, and sharing your thoughts with us. I appreciate it, and I appreciated some of the background and history as well. Thank you.
Oh, thanks a lot. Take care, everyone.
Would either Joe Way or Joe Calamita bring Mike up to do a public comment for the first responder tax credit discussion, please?
Ben Hunter. He's here, Mike. Michael's here, Hunter.
Oh, excellent. Mike, do you want to go ahead?
Yes. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
All right. So I don't know how much has been discussed, but I wanted to thank the board for even considering the, just the first responder tax credit. I don't know, Hunter, what, if you guys have any of the information we've shared previous has been shared with the rest of the board members, or if you'd like me to go over it from the beginning?
If you want to do a big, broad picture, um, I recall that I forwarded several of the emails that either you or, uh, Chris Jordan had, had forwarded to me, um, but we can certainly follow up and make sure that all of those were shared.
I'll do a very broad overview of this, then I'm here for any specific questions, or I can reshare, resend out the emails if anything you guys specifically need. But essentially in October of last year, House Bill 1673 was passed, and it was sort of an expansion on the property tax credit. Initially, the property tax credit was only to the local government, but is now expanded to include the school district, uh, the ability for the school districts to offer a property tax credit for, uh, first responders and EMS companies. So we've essentially asked the school board to consider this. For Exeter, as us being a volunteer organization, we are trying every way we can to keep the, our department organized and staffed 24/7. This past, a couple of months ago, the township actually upped their tax credit to 50%. Um, and even with that, we've been using that for marketing recently, and we've been getting some interest in getting more volunteers in than we have in the past. This is not a blanket tax to anybody who is a fire department member. I know some of the concerns have always been, oh, if I just sign up to be a firefighter, I'm going to get this credit. We actually have requirements that are set forth to even qualify for the tax credit. You must be an active member with the fire department for six months. You must attend at least 12 Tuesday meetings, trainings a year, or the equivalent time, time to your work schedule. You must respond to a minimum of 10% of the dispatched structure fires or accidents with entrapments per year. Interior members must do at least 24 staffing shifts or document 200 hours of service. So the staffing shifts are when a volunteer actually spends the night or spends hours at the station. So the staffing shift might be 6:00 PM tonight until 6:00 AM tomorrow. Um, or some, some of the members will do 6:00 AM Saturday to 6:00 AM Sunday. So they actually have, we actually have staffed shifts of volunteers in the station. So that is what the, the minimum of 24 staffing shifts in the year. And then support members, members who don't want to be interior firefighters, support members must document at least 200 hours of service to the department in the year. So we're hoping that the tax credit would help us retain current members and then recruit new members as well. It'll also help avoid, as, as long as we can get in new members, it helps avoid the prospect of having to add full-time firefighters. And a full-time firefighter costs approximately a hundred thousand dollars per year, per position, for salary benefits, insurance, et cetera. So Hunter, I don't know, if there's any other questions you'd like to ask from me now, or if you guys want to have your discussion and I'm here. Please let me know.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike. I, I really appreciate that, that tidbit that you added at the end as well with the approximate cost of what a full-time firefighter looks like. And I, I don't think, uh, that what we're talking about this evening is if we don't do the tax credit, we have a full-time firefighter department next year or anything like that. But I think one of the reasons why I'm interested in this and, and why we've been trying to connect in this way is because this is really a long-term community view, wanting to make sure that we're supporting our volunteer firefighter department. Um, and I know that you guys have variable, uh, various means of compensation, but those compensations are nowhere near the cost of what a full-time fire department would be. Um, and as we talk about the tax burden that is placed on the residents, um, we have a hand in that. And I think being good, responsible citizens of our community includes trying to provide for our first responders, because those services cost an extremely large amount of money. And I'll just point to Spring Township, which has a fire department budget, I think of about $3 million this year. And that is extremely, uh, well, that, that would have an outsized impact on our tax rates at a local level. And I think that the state has given us, um, this mechanism, uh, to try and work with fire departments. If there's some figure that we can come to, I'd like to propose 25% to the, to the board for discussion purposes this evening, um, or we can discuss it later, because we are getting kind of late in the evening, that we would look at that and, and have a discussion around that. I, I will represent the, maybe one piece of the administration's thoughts, and I'm sure they'll be able to bring into this as well. That percentage tax incentive would come at a direct cost to the general fund budget, uh, that we were considering this evening. Um, and it would depend on what percentage. Obviously, if we did 100, it'd have the most. If we did 1%, it'd have the least. So, you know, I'll, I'll leave it at that and see if anybody has any questions. I just ask that you try to be mindful of the time, because I, I know I've taken an outsized amount of time here, and I would like to wrap up quickly.
Yeah, I have one question for Mike. I was glad to hear that you talked about documenting the time for training and for other activities. But sometimes documenting doesn't tell the whole story. Do you also audit, uh, the information periodically?
Yeah. So we actually, so for any of our company trainings, we actually keep our own records of like the person doing the training, will, will keep records of who was there. And then the individual firefighter has to turn in at the end of the year, what their, um, their hours were and how many staffing shifts they've done. So it's sort of, it is a, a two-folded side of things. I would turn in my own hours, plus it's been documented on the administrative side of how many shifts I've done. We have to log into the system. Whenever I do, take a duty shift, I'm logged into our system, so I can run a digital report that shows it. And it's not just me saying, hey, I worked this shift. So yes, it's documented on both sides.
Okay. Thank you.
So does this cover the housemen or just the straight volunteers?
This is just the straight volunteers.
Okay. Yeah, Hunter, do we have any like pro forma of the fire, the, the department's budget?
I believe that.
Cause there is a. Go ahead, sorry.
I believe that if a fire department receives any taxes from the community, and I believe that the township does have a fire tax, if I recall correctly.
Yeah.
They are required. Yeah, they are required to file their budget with the governing body. So in this case, it'd be the Board of Supervisors. But, you know, if, if we wanted to see that, and I, I would say as a general point, if we were to adopt this, then we would require that those financials be reported. But a lot of, a lot of the financials that the, the fire company does is already audited. Specifically, their for fire insurance fund is audited by the state, I believe, every, uh, I don't think it's every year. I think it's like every second or third year or something along those lines. And those are all available through the, the Pennsylvania Auditor General's Office.
Yeah. And I think they're also a nonprofit, so they have, they file their nonprofit.
You'd know that world better than I do.
Yeah, yeah. And it's a, I, I forget what the form, it's escaping me right now, but, um, there's a tax form that they have to file.
A hundred, you know, if you do something like this, I'd prefer it to be a dollar amount instead of percentage. That way it's equitable to everyone.
So can I ask, I, I believe that we currently do something like this for people who volunteer within the school district, but I believe there's a dollar figure on it. So we do have some precedent. Uh, there is a, there is a threshold though.
Yeah, we have, we have a, basically they get, uh, 499 hour for up to 100 hours, which comes out to, you know, basically $500. For 100 hours of, of community service. Um, and then it's, it's at the end of the year, whatever, if they made the 100 hours, we send them a check for that $500 to offset the, uh, their taxes.
Okay. So we, so, I mean, that's a direct volunteer to some activities in the school district itself.
Right. Yeah. And this year we had no one, because we didn't have a lot of volunteers in the, in the district.
Right.
So I'm wondering from any board members, if, if anyone would have a problem. And to me, the next logical step would be, uh, approaching the legislation that was passed to see what we would be required to do. And if we would be required to, or if we could do what Brian just suggested, would which be a flat dollar amount to the solicitor. Does anybody have a problem that we would move to that stage at this point? Cause that would incur billable hours, of course. But to me, that seems like the next logical step before we make a determination about passing a resolution or something to that effect. So I'm not hearing any, any concerns with that. So I think if, uh, it's acceptable to the board, and I'm hearing that there isn't an issue with that, that we would ask the solicitor to look at the question directly, if we can put a capped, um, number in. And what would our process have to be of adopting a resolution around that as well? And once we have that in, in place, we'll have a discussion around a specific proposed number next week, uh, not next week, I'm sorry, uh, next month in May. Because there, we, what we would want to do is, is finalize and make a decision before the next school year. Cause that's when new tax bills will come out. Um, so we're not in a rush to do it. And I, I think that we can take our time with this, just as the LERTA. But does anybody have any problems with that?
I just have a question for Brian. Um, where would that fit into the budget then, Brian?
It would be a decrease in the revenue.
Okay. But would that, so would we have to raise taxes? Would we have to take money? You know, take funds away from the student part, or would we have to, um, you know, increase that deficit again?
All three? It's your choice. Yeah, but I think we're, how many, Hunter, from our conversations back in December? From our conversations back in December, did they say there's what, 25 people?
No, it's
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So it's actually less than that. So in 2020, we only had 14 members qualify, and that was an increase uh, from 2019 of four. And the increase of four, I'm pretty sure two of those were because we took over, the fire department absorbed the fire police and two fire policemen qualified. Um, we are opti- we would be optimistic to gain six more with this program to maybe get us to 20. But that would, that would be us adding six more qualifying members.
Are there any additional entities that would apply other than the fire department?
I'm not aware of any because the EMS for uh, Exeter is paid. So I don't, they're not volunteer.
I think the one part that may offer some challenges is that we have Borough St. Lawrence residents who are also included that aren't included in Exeter Township. Um, they are serving the same population. And Mike, maybe you can uh, go to that better. If I recall correctly, I think that Chris might have suggested that there were two people who were eligible who live in the Borough of St. Lawrence.
I, you know, I remember that. I don't specifically have that in my notes, and I don't know if he included that when, when he and I went over this, he told me 14 qualified. I don't know if that, if that 14 included the St. Lawrence members, but I can uh, I can find out and report back.
If I remember from that meeting, I think those two were St. Lawrence residents, but they might have been in Antietam Fire Company.
Well, it's uh, Mount Penn Fire Company.
Mount Penn, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I question, I mean, what if, what if a person is a firefighter, but they work for a company that maybe doesn't service Exeter? Um, I'm assuming that they wouldn't qualify. Is that correct?
I don't know the answer to that. That might be a solicitor question specifically.
And it, it could be that we can create parameters around that either, because I don't remember that being specifically addressed when I looked at the underlying legislation when they had passed it.
And to me, that would make more sense. I mean, I think they have to be in service to the uh, to our community.
Especially if it also has to come down to meeting our requirements. I mean, our requirement for the Exeter tax, for the municipal tax credit is an active member of the Exeter Township Fire Department for six months. So that's already in our requirements that you're a member of the Exeter Department.
And we, we do, we will be able to easily find out which fire companies service um, each municipality within the community. And I believe it's only Mount Penn and Exeter. I mean, we have other departments that are further up the run cards. Um, like when you call 911, if, if the fire depart, if Exeter Fire Department or Mount Penn Fire Department aren't available, then you have other departments who will respond thereafter, but they're farther up the run cards. And we're fortunate to have really strong departments around here that I don't really think that that's necessary. Mike could probably speak to that much better than I can. Um, but we'd be able to find out pretty quickly who would be eligible in that geographic requirement or not.
Yeah, and uh, Chris just got back to me that the, the four, the number, the 14 includes the members that qualified for St. Lawrence.
Hunter, are we aware of any other communities that have taken any action relative to this in Berks?
Um, to the school district one, I think the last thing we heard was no. Um, in fairness, this was only just passed, I believe, you know, at the end of last year. Um, in terms of the incentive for other municipalities, I believe that there are several in Berks County. Exeter is being one of them, and I believe St. Lawrence also has a program as well. I don't know if St. Lawrence has adopted the, the same percentage that Exeter now has, because I know that they had talked about that. I don't know if that's happened yet. Um, but I believe that there are several. I, I don't know specifically, but I'm sure that wouldn't be difficult to find out.
Brian, maybe you can throw that on your list at your business managers meeting on Friday.
Will do.
And then as far as the overall number, I mean, once we figure out a percentage or a flat fee uh, or a flat, a flat number, then we can look at the uh, budget impact of that.
Okay.
Okay, uh, if there isn't any other discussion around that, uh, we can move on to the state contractor vendor approval. So going once, going twice. So thank you, Mike, for coming this evening. I, I appreciated your, your comments and being able to supply some of that information to us very quickly. Thank you. Brian, do you want to take it away with this?
Yeah, thi- this is just another state contract that was bid out through the state. Um, there's some things that they have on here we can purchase through that aren't on the other contracts, so. But we cannot just purchase through any state contract unless the board approves it. So this would just be added to the list that the board has already approved.
Is there
Brian, if, go ahead.
Is there an attachment or something? Like there's, there's nothing listed.
Thi- this was a request from athletics. I'll get um, this store, they have to send me what he was looking to purchase through there. Uh, I think it was between 11 and $18,000, but you know, I require at least you know, three bids or, or three quotes or state contract at that amount, you know? So I'll, I'll get you that or have that send that out.
Brian, could you speak to quick why the board would need to approve the use of a, a state contract outside of Co-Stars?
Okay, um, basically you have to bid over everything. I think it's 22,000 this year. Uh, but if a state has bid out on a, on a contract or a, another like Co-Stars, as a um, contract approved by the state, if they've bid off things out already, you can purchase off those as long as the board agrees that's acceptable uh, avenue for the, the district to use. I can't just go say I want to purchase off a Co-Stars if you didn't approve them as being acceptable. Um, why is that? My previous school district, we actually were uh, had the board approve a contract down New Jersey because the Gators were buying, were about $1,000 cheaper on their Jersey contract compared to the Co-Stars contract. So, you know, but I could not purchase unless the board approved that New Jersey contract. Um, so, you know, we can't just go out and, you know, purchase things off of any old site if it's within the big requirements or the quote requirements.
Could the board approve a resolution that permits the administration to purchase off of any Co-Stars contract or any state contract that is reciprocally, I don't think I said that right, reciprocally? I, I'm struggling with that word. That is reciprocated um, uh, to Co-Stars uh, through the state.
I, I would not recommend that. Before I even brought this up, I had Elena make sure it's a legitimate contract, make sure there, there's references that everything they, they have on this was filed through with, uh, and it was publicly bid and it's a legal contract, because there's a lot of companies out there that'll say they're on uh, you know, Maryland's XYZ contract and when you
No, I, I think, I think you're mis- misunderstanding me. This would only be for Pennsylvania state contracts that are awarded to the state, but also permitted for Co-Stars members to use.
Well, Co-Stars is a state contract, so there, there's, we're talking two different things here.
No, there's, there's two separate ones. There's Pennsylvania state contracts that Co-Stars members may use, and then there's Co-Stars, which is separate from that one.
Right, and then there's um, another one out of the IU, uh, Susquehanna IU, there's um, RKM contract. There's a bunch of them that, that were actually bid uh, that the state has endorsed. But there's some you actually have to pay, you know, fee to be a member of.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, y- you can do a resolution like that, but I, I think it would be abused down the road. Because someone, instead of going to business office, can I purchase? Well, I have, they have a state contract, I can just purchase on that anyway. And even when they go to Co-Stars, you might have five different vendors on the same piece of equipment. Each one can, they, they can't charge any more than they bid, but they can charge less. So you can get them working against each other and get a lower prices. You know, which the business officer does.
Yeah. Well, maybe, maybe you and I can have some offline conversation about maybe something different that I was thinking about. Um, but I certainly don't have an issue with this, and, and I think that we should move this forward to April unless somebody has an objection.
I mean, once you approve the list, as long as they keep it up to date and keep their bonds, you know, it stays on the list.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but this one was never used before.
Oh, I, I think I misunderstood. You're saying that anytime we use a contract under PA Supplies List, we'll now be okay.
Right.
Okay, I thought you were saying
You approved as, as, as a, a source for purchasing Co-Stars before, so any contract on the Co-Stars is good now.
Yeah, I understand. Never mind. I'm not going to call you. I, I, I totally with it now. I thought, I thought what you were saying is every time we went under a new contract that had a different contract number, we would have to approve
No, 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 no. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, so Mr. Fike, what, what, are you going to attach this contract? Or
I'll, I'll attach you what they want to purchase under this one. Yeah, if I attach a contract, it's probably, you know, 300 pages long.
Okay.
But I, I'll also send the link to the website on all the things they offer under this one.
Okay.
I'll ask Mr. Legat to send me the, uh, what the specific thing he's looking for right now. It's cheaper on this than it was on Co-Stars, so.
I'm done.
Okay, great. Um, moving on. Um, this thing is Dr. Hamburger, um, policies. Before we do that, this is our last thing before the end of our meeting. So if you have a public comment that you would like, please send your email now to questions@myexeter.org. Okay, Dr. Hamburger.
Thanks, Mrs. Wilson. Um, we have five um, proposed policy revisions that will be on the agenda for April. Uh, all five are relatively modest, you know, um, modifications to existing policies. And what I like to do is just turn it over to um, this is Dawn Harrison. She can um, kind of give us a summary of the changes in each one of these five policies. Dawn?
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Um, before I explain the updates for these particular policies, I just want to give the board an overview where we're at in terms of policy work. If you recall, when I got here in July, we had a significant backlog of policy updates that we needed to do. Uh, with Dr. Hamburger's support, we've been able to work through almost that entire backlog at this point. Uh, and with the batch that I put forward in May, we'll, we will actually be caught up with the most current policy news network update, which was issued this February. So I know I've been saying as we're going here, you know, bear with us, we're getting caught up, we're getting caught up. Well, in May, we will be at the point where we are officially caught up. And then any other policy work that we will be doing, um, will be in relation to new updates that are put out. So having said that, uh, we do have five policies on for first reading. Uh, and uh, Dr. Hamburger is correct, they are modest changes. In 137.1, uh, there's just clarification around uh, language related to home education students being able to participate in junior ROTC programs on campus. As you know, uh, home education students are entitled to participate in our extracurricular programs. Uh, and as a result of the National Defense Authorization Act amendments, uh, they asked to have this kind of clarification around junior ROTC participation for home ed students. Uh, policy 331, job-related expenses. Again, there's just clarifying language that's added that indicates that uh, adequate documentation is needed for reimbursement for job-related expenses. Policies 332, working periods, and policy 803, the school calendar have uh, an update which relates to um, the ability for the district to make adjustments as necessary for temporary emergency provisions in the workday and in the calendar, uh, i.e. pandemic. Um, we have been doing that this year uh, as a result of guidance and updates through PDE. But this formalizes that in your policy for any future emergency uh, provisions, hopefully not a future pandemic, but if there would be any situation where the board would need to make those kinds of emergency decisions. And of course, in uh, the working periods policy, it clarifies that any of those adjustments uh, must be made in conjunction and in collaboration with the collective bargaining unit agreements. And then uh, finally, 626, federal fiscal compliance. Again, there's the addition of a provision in there for extenuating or emergency circumstances in relation to payment of staff with federal funds. Um, and in accordance with any federal mandates uh, that would apply in an emergency situation. That's it.
I'll just have one question. There's a reference in that last policy that you, you mentioned to a federal um, programs coordinator. Um, is, do we have somebody in that role? And could you say who that is?
We do. That's a good question, particularly with uh, Dr. Winter's departure. Uh, Melissa Devlin uh, remains as our federal programs coordinator for the district, and she's handling uh, those uh, coordination duties.
Is it, is that listed in her job description? I guess it is. But I mean, is, is, is it actually explicitly uh, detailed in her job description that she's federal programs coordinator?
I would have to toss that over to either Dr. Minor or Dr. Holler uh, in relation to the job description.
I couldn't jump in. So actually, um, technically speaking, uh, Dr. Flam is, has the oversight of the federal programs, but in um, Melissa Devlin's job description, she's assistant principal uh, and federal programs coordinator. So she assists Dr. Flam, but Dr. Flam's name would be um, in the place where Patrick Winters used to be on those documents.
So Dr. Flam would be responsible, he, he would be um, he would be the one, it, when it says delegation of responsibility, he would be the one who would be delegated.
Right, and then, and then Melissa is available to help him coordinate those as part of her job responsibilities in her role as assistant principal.
Good. Board members, any questions related to these? I did send these out earlier. If you had a chance to review them um, and the summaries as well, so. Any, any questions you might have, you could um, send to um, Donna Napoli, and she would uh, send those to the, the appropriate administrator. Or comments that you might have. That's all we have uh, for our, our section of the agenda. Thanks, Mrs. Wilson.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Okay, um, we are moving into time for public comment. Do we have anyone on the line that would make, like to make public comment?
I believe we had one public comment that came in, but I'm not sure that she joined the meeting.
Okay.
Joe, have you seen?
She did not.
Okay.
Okay, just a reminder that we, we are doing um, live public comment at this point, so um, you know, if you do want to make a public comment, um, there uh, the administration will send out to you a link so that you can join um, for future reference. Um, I did see that she did write a few comments, and I will share those comments with the board. Um, okay. We are going to move on um, with moving our things forward to the agenda for our voting agenda, which will be on um, Tuesday, April 20th at 7 o'clock PM at the administration building, at Lausch Administration Building. Um, we will be moving forward to be the hiring of an additional supervisor of special education, to D, the changes to the district calendar, um, 3B, the BCTC operating budget, and 3E, state contract vendor approval. And also then 4A, the policies for first and second reading. Unless anyone has any objections. Okay, are there any other board members that would like to be heard at this time?
Allison, I just wanted to say quick that I'm going to be talking with Brian, I think this week, to talk about maybe a separate meeting to discuss the fire tax incentive and uh, the LERTA program. Um, I can sense that there was a lot of desired discussion for that tonight, and I don't want to you know, spend two hours talking about those two things for our May meeting. So I'll, I'll talk with Brian about that and see if that'll be necessary.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Michelle, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make a comment that I appreciated uh, the budget presentation. I felt like it was really in terms that people could understand. And it was information that was meaningful, so I appreciate that. And I love that, you know, looking at the budget, there's going to be a reduction um, in our expenses. So that's wonderful. Not that I want to add an expense, but I just wanted to mention, and we've brought this up um, in the past since I've been on the board. Um, when I was in school, long time ago, uh, we had an activity bus. And I know, you know, maybe that's not something that we could do now, but I do feel like that was something that was very beneficial to the students. Um, if they needed a Um, if they needed to stay after school for tutoring, or if they were in a sport, or if they were in a club. Um, I think there's a lot of families that don't have, um, the ability to, um, pick up their children. And I feel like especially in times like this where we want kids to be connected with others and to have that kind of, you know, positive mental health experience, that that might be something in the future that we might want to think about again. So I don't know if Dr. Minor's familiar with that, um, if anybody wants to talk a little bit.
I think, yeah, the idea of an activity bus, um, you know, something that some school districts have on a regular basis, others have tried and then not enough kids take the activity bus. I mean, there's, there's, I think, a lot to be considered. It has come up several times this year, and so I do think that it's something that is worth the administrative team taking a look at. And, uh, even like I will say, when we had students who, um, we offered like a bus to come to athletics when we were virtual, we didn't have very many students take us up on that. So I think it's that, uh, coordination of what's the, what's the cost benefit analysis. There's some districts who have even offered like Uber cards to kids, um, as it, as the less expensive way. I'm not sure about the security of that always, but a less expensive way of, of managing that same issue. So I think it's definitely worth, um, engaging in a conversation. Mrs. Stratton, and, and you're right, there are certainly some kids for whom that's an obstacle.
I love the idea of just exploring it, so thank you.
I would just like to add my voice to that. Uh, when I was in school here in the eighteenth century, we also had an activity bus. Of course drawn, but, uh, but I would not have been able to do cross-country, to do the musical, to do the senior class play, to do key club, to do everything else I did without that bus. And so, yeah, let's, uh, I think we should at least take a look at it. Thanks for bringing that up, Michelle. I had something else. Saw an article in the paper about the Burks Science and Engineering Fair. And the only school listed as winning an award was Conrad Wiser. So I either read a poorly reported story or there's something I don't know. Did, did Exeter not participate this year in that?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with that, um, Mr. Fiddler, so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know. Um, perhaps Dr. Flam could check with the high school.
Sorry, I'm not aware either.
If, if there's. On here, uh, for as long as, well, I've been back in Reading since two thousand and three, uh, but the Burks County, Science and Engineering Fair was always a big draw. It was either held at Quittstown or, or Albright. Uh, and I was just curious to know if we, could we find out if we did participate?
I'll look into it, Mr. Feller.
And if we, if we did, I'd love to hear, have a report, um, next time.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much, um, everybody for all of your time tonight. And, um, I will see you on the twentieth of April. Thank you. Have a good night.
Night.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.